Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order.
It is.
Six oh two. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three order, revised orders, expanding certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter thirty-eight, Section eighteen. Meetings of Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will be conducted both in person and in volts from March thirty first, two thousand twenty-five. Agenda items listed for those recently anticipated by the chair, not all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and School Committee Recorder and also the Berkshire Eagle, the Berkshire Edge. Okay. Superintendent Demons report first, I have.
Yeah, so just a couple of things, and I shared this with faculty, but I think it makes sense to share more broadly. I'm gonna be out for a few days for surgery. There's a whole plan, and if you email me in my absence, it can go to Doreen, my assistant, Colin, if it's instructional, or the principals, or Sharon, if it's financial. I don't totally know how many days, but if it'll, for a few, I'll actually be really busy, and I'll just be recovering, probably in the tail, I don't start responding to things, but I thought it made sense to know that. The other thing that I was asked to share was there's a plan and a structure to do some exit, formal exit interviews with the principals, and that'll happen, and then that information will be shared in some sort of summary for in the future. So those are two things. We're gonna start with our student-based roses and thorns, and I think Ruth, you are the sole student tonight, so we'll start with you, if that's okay. What's going on at DeBois?
So, the Bi-Pop Club at Sozo, one that talks about Sozo couldn't be here today, is officially a seventh and eighth grade club, and I believe that there's a fifth and sixth grade Bi-Pop Club starting. The GSA is having a ton of members, having fun, this is the seventh and eighth grade GSA. They recently had a comic book thing, this wasn't just making arrangements for comic books, though, I'm sure that's what a couple people did. This was like, there was someone who came over, and we talked a little bit about who, what it means to be a queer, transgender, LGBTQ plus person, and turned that into a comic or supporter, and then doing comics about it, and we gave some of that to the person that came in, because she is still in college, I believe, who is actually doing a research project about this. Then the Student Council is also doing seventh and eighth grade semi-formals, end of school year dance.
Nice.
And they're planning a spirit week with a pep rally week, which I think everyone's excited about. My final two things are, I'm past started, it's not everyone's favorite things, but we're pushing through it. And the seventh and eighth grade, no, the eighth grade is going on field trip to Philadelphia soon, the seventh grade is going on field trip to Boston soon, and I think the sixth grade has a field trip coming up as well, although I don't remember what it is. And the seventh and eighth grade are working very hard to raise money for their two concerts.
Great, thanks, thanks so much, I really appreciate that. Kristi, do you have any things, just sort of general moves from the high school?
Uh, sure. So I guess one of the biggest news items is that we did hire for our CBTE Assistant Principal, Ian Brown, will be joining us, and actually, he will be starting doing some work even before July first, so he's gonna join the next General Advisory Board meeting on May fourteenth, and then he'll probably be doing about thirty days with us, so that he can do onboarding with Pete and I this spring, to help set him up for success as we go into the next school year. But just student activity side, there's obviously so much going on at this time of year at school, it's hard to even think about it all, but AP plans are starting next week. This Friday, the class of twenty twenty-five has their talent show, so if anybody wants to come out and support them on that, they would be thrilled. And next Friday is the Spring Concert, so we welcome folks to join for the Spring Concert, and then obviously all of the sports and everything else that's happening, you know, as part of our just general seasonal activities at the hospital, so, yeah.
Great, while there's interesting places, Anne's on the line, so I need to take her on, okay, just so for the record. So Anne Hutchinson?
Here.
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Diane, is she on the line?
I don't see her, I don't see her either, okay.
Rich?
Yeah.
And my son. So that's the official, sorry about that.
Okay, no, that's fine, and just one other informational thing. On Monday, we had, and I'll send a reminder to everybody, but Monday are the Great Barrington and West Stockbridge Town Meetings, so I'll send a reminder, if you live in Great Barrington or West Stockbridge, go to town meeting, it's fun. But, you can say that, right? Show your support. And then, and then the Stockbridge ones a little later, and I'll send out reminders on that. So, next few things, Miles, is there, is there somebody presenting from?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'm happy to speak to you.
Is there anything else that Ruth did cover that you wanna add?
Not, not full, I was.
How do you do, I forgot.
I forgot about us for the concerts, who are closest. Yeah, so, we do, in addition to everything here Ruth mentioned, we do have spring concerts coming up, for band, of course, and orchestra, those are on May fifteenth, and we're, you know, starting to have all the combined rehearsals and classical lots, that are really exciting, love those. This was not necessarily a middle school event, but the middle schoolers had a fantastic time at the Special Olympics yesterday. I really want to recognize the work that Ellie Rizzo and a lot of other people do to put that event together, it's been a part of Berkshire Hills for fifty-two years?
Forty.
So, Hawaii, it's been there, and it was, it was a really nice day for that. The other thing I will say is that I had my first of the series of planning meetings that we hold annually to plan our eighth grade graduation, and that's always an exciting thing to start looking at, making sure that we have everything in place to recognize our graduates. So, the end of the year, just like the high school, the end of the year activities are starting to come, fast and furious, and we are, I'm gonna pick a bit right now.
Okay, great, great. And Katie may come a little later, we may circle back. So, we don't have grant approvals, the next thing on the agenda is the building project updates, I'm gonna introduce Donna Denisco, who is our, and she's on the screen, can unmute herself, but she's our, our lead architect designer, really one of the two market firms that are working on this. For those that have met Donna, she's, she's incredible, and like a force of nature, and I think this week she was here. We did school visits on Monday, Tuesday, had a meeting Wednesday night, and now this, so this is four days of meetings in a row for Donna, working on Berkshire Hills, it's sort of amazing. So Donna, the floor is yours, tell us about what's going on and all the things that are happening.
Wonderful, is it possible that I could share my screen?
Yeah, if it, does it let me share the screen, or do I need to?
It says I am disabled. So I don't, I think, I know, let me try. Yep, perfect.
Okay, great.
Wonderful, so, hoping you can all see that, that's wonderful, and thank you, Peter, for such an introduction. I think, I think the admiration is mutual. We started this project, I think, only in February, and it has been so wonderful to get to know so many people throughout the district, the staff, senior leadership, school building committee, and some school committee members by way of the school building committee. So it's really an honor to be part of such a dynamic district. As part of the process, so tonight, I just wanna give you a quick overview of the process, what to expect over the next few months, probably actually culminating towards the end of the year, just so we can kind of set, set expectations, because we are partners with the Mass School Building Authority, or the MSBA, as part of the, as part of the project, and with that, they have a very prescriptive process in which we need to follow. But, but we fully support the way that they have laid out their program, because what is so critically important to them, and for us, and of course for you, is that the educational program needs to drive the design. And so the very first conversations that we have are all geared towards what's called the Preliminary Design Program, or the PDP. And that is basically what we're going through now, which identifies your educational program and space summary, identifying your existing conditions, both the building and the site, establish design parameters based on the feedback that we've received, and to develop and evaluate multiple alternatives, which includes a repair, of course, a renovation, addition, and then new construction. We plan on submitting the PDP to the MSBA at the end of June, and then we'll continue the feasibility study, which culminates hopefully in October, that might, that might be pushed out a couple of months, but with a preferred schematic report, which summarizes the process and the conclusions from the PDP. It will provide a cost comparison table of the alternatives that we've compared, and to arrive at a solution that's educationally appropriate and cost-effective for the district and, and the district towns. So again, the educational program drives the design, and so MSBA is asking us to identify all the programs to be offered within your new school, and we say no, it could be addition, renovation. It's important that we identify the programmatic spatial relationships and adjacencies to make this as of an inclusive and comprehensive school as possible, and then the educational program really defines the space needs and the total square footage for the project. As, as we've been learning more about your educational program, and we're almost done writing the educational program, and we'll be sharing that with you, if not at the next school committee meeting, the following school committee meeting, we've also been reaching out to the communities to understand what their vision is for a school. We've had six meetings, as Peter's kind of alluded to, of these visioning workshops, we've met with the senior leadership team, we've had three workshops, two virtually, one in person, with pretty much the same group of people, anywhere from thirty to fifty people that have been involved. We had a really great all-staff workshop in April with Monument Mountain staff, and then opened it up to a full community workshop, I guess that was just yesterday, or two days ago. So, so we have completed our visioning sessions, and we'll give a quick report on that. And then, as Peter mentioned, we really had fun visiting three regional, three schools that have, one's, Mount Red Rock is a renovation addition, and Wakona and Teconic are new schools, and it was great to be in the schools, talking to the staff and the leadership of the buildings, to understand what works, what would they do differently, and how we can apply what we saw and learned from them, and apply it to the Monument Mountain School. So just to give you a quick recap of the visioning sessions, we asked people what were their top favorite future-ready learning goals, and I'm sure these all probably resonate with all of you, from curious to being resilient, creative, lifelong learning is so important, to have the digital literacy, to be a successful citizen in the, in the twenty-first century, to think independently, and to be empathetic. We also asked, and this is actually a culmination of all of these meetings, so it was from across, quite a very cross-section of community members. We asked what some of the desired educational priorities were, these are the top that came, came up, we had many, many more, but safe and welcoming, project-based learning with integrated special education, cross-disciplinary connections, we understand how important it is to make sure that the Voc-Tech and Chapter Seventy-four programs are really connected with a comprehensive high school. Creating ninth and tenth grade academies, we're exploring that as, as an option and opportunity, as we design a new school, displaying and exhibiting the amazing work your students do, and then creating flexibility for what we don't know is gonna lie ahead of us for the fifty years of this building will, will serve you. We asked what architectural priorities are, and a lot of them tie closely to the educational priorities, of course, health and safety, wayfinding, but agile and varied and inspiring classrooms, gathering space, gathering spaces, display and exhibition, looking at opportunities to expand your Chapter Seventy-four programs, creating fishbowl areas, and what that means is be seen and be heard and be, and show all of the amazing opportunities and instruction that goes on in your schools. Have great outdoor connections with your beautiful site and, and your campus, of course, making sure it's durable, create good storage, and some people even thought it would be great to house the district offices at the school itself. I'm having a problem advancing, here we go. We also asked what, what was important to everyone regarding twenty-first century design patterns, and I'm not gonna read through all of them, I think we'll share if this, if the presentation hasn't been shared, but what, what our takeaway is that we want this building to be completely used by the students, anywhere, anytime learning, it's not going to happen just in the classrooms. Extend the learning areas into the corridors, into the cafeteria, maximize every inch of this building for students to gather, collaborate, and, and create amazing connections. We have heard a lot that we need effective storage, and then take, again, taking advantage of your amazing site with biofuel and design. It was interesting, because we always do like to say, okay, what do you like about your school, tell us, tell us, there's gotta be something good about it, other than the instruction that goes on inside. And again, what we heard was the campus connection and views really ranked up at the top. Some people felt that they actually liked some of the architectural features, and that there are some functional features that work really well within the school. So we wanna learn from what really works, and, and bring that into the new design. And probably not surprising, as we asked, what, what challenges does the facility offer or pose to you? And safety and accessibility is really important, the, the flexibility of the spaces, comfort and innovation are lacking, of course, energy and sustainability isn't very supported in that old, built old entire building, there you go. So, this is a chart that we'll probably be spending a lot of time on in the future, and with the School Building Committee. This is taking the educational program as we understand it, all of the needs to deliver the comprehensive program that you offer, and then we have to break this down by category, this is an MSBA space summary, and we have to break it down by category, and then the square footage, or NFA, is the net floor area, so, and that floor area is the square footage within the building. And so MSBA has guidelines that we need to adhere to, or we need to have programs that will support the additional space. So I really don't wanna go through the, I'll go through it all, but I'll try to do it quickly. We did meet originally in March, and we put together a wish list, wouldn't it be great? We want all of this space. And then when we started putting it down on paper, we said, well, this is a lot of space, I think we can be more efficient, right, and, and we can maximize the utilization if we look at things a little differently. So we went back to the drawing board with the leadership team, and, and really looked at how we could maximize the spaces, how we could increase utilization, so that we were able to reduce the program areas for the various categories. And then when we realized, you know, that it was still relatively large school, are there, are you sure we've looked at every single possible inch, and where might we be able to shave off a square foot here, or a square foot there? And that's really where we landed in April twenty-third. So I'll just quickly go through the program, so just, just focus on the proposed program dated April twenty-third, the column next to it is MSBA guidelines, which are pretty prescriptive, it's based on four hundred and eighty-five students, and they don't always take into consideration some specialized programs. So for core academic, the category core academic, you'll see that we're approximately nine hundred square feet above MSBA guidelines. That is because you have other programs that MSBA doesn't automatically recognize, such as your ESL program, academic support, and your Bright programs. These are your existing programs, and we're confident that MSBA will support these spaces. Special education, you have two really great programs offered in addition to all of the academic support at the Monument Mountain High School, and you'll see it's slightly over MSBA guidelines, but again, MSBA just takes a percentage of students and applies the square footage, because every district is completely different in the programs it offers for special education. Again, we're confident there will be no issues with requesting the square footage, and in fact, MSBA actually defers to DESI to review and approve these spaces. Art and music is a little bit different, we're, we're slightly over MSBA guidelines, and that's because you have an amazing art program, and we're really requesting two art classrooms to support your art program. We can continue to have that conversation, but that might be an area where MSBA might or might not support that additional square footage. You'll see that your Voc-Tech programs are really a far exceed MSBA guidelines, but that's because, again, MSBA does not recognize Chapter Seventy-four programming, because not every district has that. So based on your existing Chapter Seventy-four programs and your other Voc-Tech programs, we're confident that MSBA will support these programs. What I also wanna point out is that there's approximately four thousand square feet in the square footage of the twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five, that's for the greenhouse, but, and, and we're always already looking at ways that we can keep the cost as low as possible, that we wanna include that square footage, but what we're going to do is actually procure the, the greenhouse separately, hopefully utilizing the Future Farmers of America grant that you have. So I just wanna recognize it's in the square footage, but you'll see at the bottom, we've taken it out, because the hundred and forty-two will be important as we talk about cost per square foot in the future. Health and PE, we're actually under MSBA guidelines, based on our conversations and what we've learned, we feel that the existing gym actually is sufficient for your needs, and, and we recognize that every square foot translates to cost, and so we're trying to be mindful in putting the money where your programs are gonna be most affected. The library is right within MSBA guidelines, and your auditorium is larger than MSBA guidelines. If we keep your existing auditorium, it won't be a problem, but MSBA is asking us to compare this to new, for new, new construction at this point. And so we're slightly over about fifteen hundred square feet over in the auditorium area, and we'll see if we, if there's any way we can discuss swapping some square footage, maybe with the gym to offset the cost of the auditorium, but we, we need to anticipate that MSBA would not participate in the cost of this additional square footage. So what you'll see is that the total program area without the greenhouse is approximately ninety-five thousand square feet, which is approximately fifteen thousand square feet above MSBA guidelines. And then, that's your program area, and then we multiply this by one point five for your gross square footage, and that added square footage within the building includes your circulation, your toilets, your mechanical spaces, your closets, the, the thickness of your walls, it encompasses everything except for your actual program. And so that's approximately a hundred and forty-two thousand square feet, and that is approximately thirty-two thousand square feet above MSBA guidelines, but we're wanting to recognize that we're, we're, we wanna, we want to be as transparent as possible, and we believe approximately thirty-one hundred square feet would be borne a hundred percent by the district if we maintain these program areas. So I'm gonna, maybe I'll just pause for a second, this was a ton to take in, and if anyone has any questions?
Peter, can you just copy that at some point?
Yeah, I'll take this whole presentation tomorrow, and I'll, I'll upload it to the School Committee folder, so it'll be available to the School Committee, to the public, and the media.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any questions now.
Okay, great, and, and this is a lot, and actually, to the gentleman's request, there's a whole space summary that goes room by room by room, and this is just the summary of the categories, so you'll be seeing the, the level of detail and the scrutiny that we've gone through to arrive at these numbers. So again, as, as I talked about, the eligibility of the program spaces, so MSBA does recognize each district's core and special education programs are unique, as well as your Voc-Tech and your Chapter Seventy-four programs. And, and what's great is DESI wants to ensure that your special education programs are treated with the same vigor as your general education classrooms, so they wanna make sure the sizes are not compromised and are equal to the sizes of your Gen Ed, and they also wanna make sure that your special education is fully integrated, they don't want a corridor or a hallway where special ed programs are located. And then, again, as we talked about, the, the certain spaces that we've identified that may not be eligible for MSBA reimbursement. So, what's been going on? I, I think there was a shout-out for a couple of town meetings, so I'm gonna give a huge shout-out for our May sixteenth Community Information Meeting, it's going to be held at the High School Auditorium at six PM, we're gonna actually give tours of the high school, starting at five-thirty, for those that are not familiar with the high school itself, there'll also be a hybrid component of the information session, so if people can't attend in person, we'll also have it televised through your CTSB TV, it's a mobile. We have a School Building Committee meeting coming up on, in May, and we'll be talking about and evaluating and discussing priorities for an evaluation criteria that we can use as a matrix to apply against all of the options that we'll be considering going forward. We hope to be back before you on the twenty-third of May. We hope to be back before you on the twenty-third of May. That may slip until the following school committee meeting. But, but we want to have the school committee review and approve the educational program that we'll be submitting to MSBA. And then we have a Great Barrington Conservation Commission hearing to establish the wetland boundaries of the site. We'll be back before the school building committee on June twenty-sixth. And at that point, we will be identifying the the, the school building committee will be approving the preliminary design program for us to submit to MSBA, hopefully on June twenty-eight. And that is my very short presentation for this evening.
Questions? Oh, great. Yeah, thanks, Donna. Super thoughtful as, as always. And we look forward to seeing you on the sixteenth and, and at some future school committee meetings.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, so, so now we're gonna, uh, uh, you know, before I change gears, I like, we really get the right person in group. Uh, I'm really excited to be working with them. And Jason and Steve are particularly involved in the context of the, of the building committee. They're all in. It's really nice. When you go to one of their meetings, you always leave it more excited than when you come in. But this isn't always the case. And, and so they're, they're very good. They're very dedicated to the district and they're, they are all in. And it was really fun to walk through those other buildings. And there were things in each of them, even Braylock, uh, corner and DeCai that, that we all loved. And there were some things that made us scratch our heads a little bit, but, but it's like going around like a realtor or something. I want an open kitchen. I wanna, I wanna skylight in my bedroom. Like, it's really interesting to see how, how folks imagine different things. And Braylock was particularly interesting, because that's a renovation addition. And, and you wouldn't really know it unless somebody told you it was a renovation in addition. So then the, and the, obviously, the other two buildings were, were brand new from scratch. So, so let's change gears. We're gonna have a, a little update on basketball athletics. Carl and Christie sent around a memo, and then within the memo, there's a link on another one. Carl's joining us online. Christie's joining us in, in person. And, and I think they can give a little overview and then respond to questions as folks have them.
Carl, are you there?
I am. Yeah, so just talking, talking about the co-op sports and the middle school waivers that we have currently, based on anticipated enrollment of student athletes for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Alex, I expect that we'll need to renew all of our cooperative team agreements. So I'm also renewing our middle school waivers for our boys and girls cross-country and boys and girls tennis. In addition to renewing those agreements, we also need to explore co-ops, uh, some new, um, co-ops in middle school waivers. And one in particular, our unified basketball team is, we just finished our first year. It's very successful, but are not, we have plenty of partner athletes, but, but only three athletes with intellectual disabilities that participated on our unified team. And, and that was hard on them. They were just playing a lot of minutes and not getting any rest. So I just did some basic exploring with, uh, local schools. Like Lee High School is interested in starting a unified program, but they're kind of in the same boat as us. And they would, they would welcome a talk about joining us as a guest. It would be the host school of a, a new co-op in unified basketball. And I also would like to bring up one, um, middle school, new middle school waiver. This spring, for the first time in my six years, we didn't have a JV baseball program. And I'd done some talking with the Babe Ruth and, and the Little Leagues. And Little League teams are down to just a couple of teams. There'll be a few freshmen coming up.
Carl, we're, we're losing you a little bit from a sound perspective.
I'm sorry. Is this any better?
Yeah, much better.
Yeah, I was just talking about JV baseball. And our numbers were low, so I, I'd like to explore a middle school waiver for JV baseball for next spring. Those are the two I talked about. I don't know if you caught about the unified basketball co-op, but also JV baseball, middle school waiver would be the two new. And I think we should continue with our current co-ops and middle school waivers.
Steve, I'm, I'm guessing people have a number of questions about different things. Do you want to take a motion and then discuss, or do you want to discuss the questions? So does it, does anybody in the committee have questions about any of these?
I, I have a question. Carl, I was surprised to see the Alpine skiing co-op as a re-up. I wasn't aware that was a co-op. I don't think a lot of every student has skied with us in the last five years. And I also know that our ski team is by far the largest in the county. We have a full varsity slate, a full JV slate. So I'm not sure that, that, that fits the criteria, any of the criteria. I think, I'm guessing it's probably just an artifact from a bygone day. So I would not be supporting re-upping the Alpine skiing with.
That's a fair point. When that was started, I think that was, um, from what I understand, it was, it was just to give a, a skier an opportunity to ski. It didn't, it didn't really fit the formula. You're right about that. But that, that would be a, you know, that would be, that would be one that we wouldn't have to continue.
Okay, great. When we get to the motion stage.
I, I had a question. I'm just curious about the, the, this is connected to the middle school thing. So in some sports, if seventh, eighth graders are running cross-country, from a physical perspective, I, I don't think it's a disadvantage. And, and in some contexts, it might even be an, an advantage. I, I wonder about JV baseball. Typically JV would be ninth and tenth graders. But if, if there's a, a really big tenth grader pitching against a, a relatively small seventh grader, is, is that physically potentially problematic or, or even, even unsafe?
Yeah, all I can say, Peter, is that it's, it's been going on for a while in Berkshire County. And our, our JV teams are always often playing against middle school kids, whether it's from Mount Everett or Mount Braylock or, and now Jury's doing that as well. Uh, the larger schools don't do that, but, um, other schools have done it for a while and it's been done safely.
Okay, thanks. That addresses my concern.
I don't know if this is squarely within our purview, but I think I gotta raise it. It's, um, I hear what you're saying about, you know, the numbers being down at Babe Ruth and Little League. But, um, I hate to decimate those programs too. Do, you know, I kind of,
Well.
I mean, does it sense if we do this and all the seventh and eighth graders are gonna play JV and they'll be in more Babe Ruth or?
I think what's going on, Rich, with the other schools is they're finding a way to do both. And, and then Babe Ruth really rolls into the summer season where JV baseball will, will be ending, um, kind of mid-May, mid to late May. So there's a little overlap, but, but I think they'll, I think they'll be able to do both for, for Babe Ruth. And Little League doesn't really matter, um, because those kids aren't. But I, I was just concerned about the, the, the number of teams in Little League that are developing players. That's why I brought that up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not against doing this in baseball. Not sure it's gonna help because of the dwindling, dwindling numbers of Babe Ruth's players, but it's worth a try. Any other questions or wonderings on the committee?
I'd just like to say thank you to Christie and Carl for doing this. You know, we are in the, first of all, as we run, we're the smallest nine to twelve high school population-wise in the state in the Western Mass. The vast majority of them have seventh through ninth grade. I mean, seven, seven through twelve, they're all playing. They've been doing it for fifty years successfully in, in all their sports. And, um, just looking at baseball, two years ago, we had sixteen freshmen baseball players. In addition to sophomores, they're almost gonna have to have cuts. So I think it's a, being such a small district, we're gonna have these fluctuations. And I appreciate Carl being nimble and Christie, um, to, when these situations arise, to kind of address it and hopefully it'll be a temporary thing. Because again, it's only two years ago where we had, you know, sixteen in just the one grade. So who knows in four or five years, two years, whatever. It might go back to that trend and we might have, be able to get rid of the seventh and eighth grade waiver. So I, I like the, the fact that Rich has brought up in the past, where it's a year-to-year thing. It's not entrenched. But when we see a need, and again, this isn't really for the seventh and eighth graders. This is for the, the ninth and tenth graders, who again, this year, they're not having a team. I mean, if we knew this ahead of time, there's a bunch of eighth graders that are gonna play, not for their sake, but for the sake of the, the ninth and tenth graders who now can't play. So I think it's, you know, I, I understand that some people are against it. And I understand the points of view. There's, might be some small negatives, but the, the positives are really far outweigh the negatives. And just regarding baseball, we've been at a disadvantage for fifty years. Because literally every other school around us, their seventh and eighth graders play JV, all the Babe Ruth teams. So they come into Babe Ruth season, they've been playing all the time. Our seventh and eighth graders, because we have no one to play, that doesn't start until the JV season's over anyway. So that kind of is a weak point. So, uh, thanks, Carl. Thanks, Christie. And I hope to see more of these situations, uh, when these situations arise, more of these, uh, good solutions.
Can I ask guys if, um, did, did we get, when we put the motion forward, the co-op with, uh, possibly with Lee, with unified basketball? Is that something that we could get approval to explore more if Lee is truly interested?
I, I'd make that motion.
Yeah, so I think there's two motions we want at least. One is concerning the, you know, middle school waiver and the other is the call.
Want me to just go through the individual motions so we can?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we start with a motion to approve a cooperative team for swimming for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-six school years?
Second, second discussion. No discussion? It's all roll call vote. So Anne?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And yes.
Uh, I make a motion to approve a cooperative, a new cooperative, uh, team with Lee for unified basketball. Second.
So I have a motion, a second discussion. Hearing none. Anne?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And yes. Give him.
No, I'm counting the renewals on cross-country tennis as one vote.
Make a motion to renew the middle school waivers for boys and girls cross-country and boys and girls tennis for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school years.
Year.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, Anne.
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Rich?
Yes.
And, um, yes. So it's one, no.
I, I think with the pleasure of the chair, I'm gonna take the next motion separately.
That's fine.
Motion to for a new, um, middle school waiver, uh, for golf for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five season.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Anne.
Yes.
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Bill? No.
Rich?
Yes.
And yes, one dissenting vote.
So it was five to one?
Yeah.
And this needs a, this needs a majority, just a simple majority, Karen?
Yes.
Okay, you want to make a motion for the next one?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, for a middle school waiver request, uh, for JV baseball for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five season.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the, the numbers are down in all of the Little League Babe Ruth. Then why is JV baseball, why are we anticipating there'd be more numbers for JV baseball? I don't understand it.
Well, if you can get five or six kids, if you get five or six seventh and eighth graders to come up, it might be the difference between having a team or not having a team.
We have seven JV players right now, which is not enough to fill the team. So it's like Carl has been working with Coach Hanky. And Carl, please interrupt me or I trajectory, I say something that's not quite right. But like, trying to find the opportunity for those seven students to be able to play. Because the other component of this that Carl and I have talked about is if you have those seven players, if those are your future varsity players, and if they can't get any playing time as JV players, what's even the future of the program at all? So.
What we're doing now is we're, we're finding days where the varsity's not playing and we're bringing, we're swinging down some varsity players to play with the JV. So they, they can get some games in this season. But if we had that pool of seventh and eighth grade baseball players, that would have allowed us to have a, a full JV team and then we could play a full schedule.
Just to your point, there's also, uh, Little League might be getting smaller. But like every other sport, basketball, soccer, you see kids fleeing the Berkshire Hills or who's who's going to these travel teams or prioritizing them. And then they come back to high school. So even though the numbers for locals might be down, um, you know, but when they come back to high school, you know, it's, the same kids are playing, they're playing different things, uh, numbers wise.
I will say, like, when we originally went down this path, I kind of had a clear mind of the sports that I thought would be appropriate for this, the ones that wouldn't. And I would not have put baseball in the ones I thought would be. But I think we gotta, we gotta run our programs, the world we're living in, not the world we want to be living in. I wish, I wish the system as a whole didn't go down this whole path. But, um, um, I, I feel like, I'm gonna support the baseball, but I feel like it's kind of less or too bad choices, you know, from my perspective on it. I don't, I don't think, I have concerns about sixteen-year-old kids playing baseball against thirteen-year-old kids. So I, I have concerns about thirteen-year-old kids being on buses with sixteen-year-old kids, um, but, you know.
So like, what's the age for Babe Ruth?
Uh, thirteen through fifty, yeah.
So it's, it's, it's kind of the same. I understand the bus part and the social part of it. But we're, we're not exactly doing anything that's breaking due ground.
Yeah, there's some young tenth graders who play Babe Ruth and there's some seventh graders. So it is some seventh grade up to young tenth graders.
And also it just like, to remind the committee that the middle school waiver votes are equal. Like that this is, we have to reapply every single year for. So it's not like they're locking in to something for even two years. So it would just be for the one year.
Yeah.
So I would add one more thing, guys. One, one of the things that has come out of, uh, parent surveys after, uh, sports season is, uh, there's just been so much positive, um, stuff mentioned by parents about these middle school waivers with the cross-country was a big hit last fall and tennis. And, and parents are just asking for more, more opportunities. Um, so it's so far so good with the middle school waivers.
Yeah, I mean, the one other thing I'll say is, uh, being active and being involved is the antidote to all sorts of other stuff. So the, the busier and more active young people are, uh, the, the better their setup across the board, right? So this is where like athletics comes over to, to S E L.
I will say also, a concern, you know, we have, um, we're not just dealing with the tension between high school sports and, you know, amateur town league type sports. We have this whole big industry growing up around sports, which I think is awful, terrible and ripping America apart. But, you know, I think if we're giving kids another option to not, not, or not being excluded from the pay-to-play sports to give another option, I support that. And I think that's important for all public schools to do that, so.
I was just curious, if there's space on the JV team, does that guarantee a place to a seventh or eighth grader? Or is that on the discretion of the coach? Like, that's inappropriate.
Carl, I, I'm gonna answer, but if I'm off again, please correct me. If there, if there are openings on the JV team and we have the approved middle school waiver and seventh and eighth graders want to participate, then they're part of the program, correct, Carl? In other words, we would be cut.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I, I, of course, there's, there's tryouts and you don't want to put a player that's, you know, that would be unsafe on the field. I don't think there's an automatic guarantee, but, um, you know, most, most likely they're gonna be part of the program. And whether it's a, you know, a developmental stage or, um, but yeah, that's, that's fair.
So, so I think this needs to be said, but I think the answer is pretty obvious. If there are seven ninth and tenth graders and a If there are seven ninth and tenth graders and a whole bunch of seventh and eighth who maybe even are better, we're not cutting any high school kids. The high school kids get on the deal.
That's correct. Right, Carl?
Yep.
Yeah. And that's actually part of the MIE regulation.
That is, that's part of the, on the link, you saw that's one of the things. We just got to be, we got to make sure coaches are educated about that.
Yeah, I think that's wrong. Okay, so roll call vote. Anne?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Rich?
Yes.
Anne, yes. So one, five to one.
Thank you, Carl, for putting that together and sharing it. Lots of, lots of moving pieces. And our thinking as a district has, has evolved and often that's, it's a positive sign.
Maybe by necessity, not by trust.
I'm in your bit, I'm in your bit.
Circling back to the unified, I watched a couple of those games. I mean, they were fantastic. If you have a chance, go out and see it. But I did feel bad for our, our players because it's only three of them. You can tell they really were burned down by the game. So hopefully, Lee will help us out and.
Give it just a couple.
Yeah, exactly. Give our kids a little bit of credit. It was fantastic.
Go double down on our conditioning.
Great.
Thanks, Carl. Thank you, guys.
So now we're going to shift gears. This is a big conversation and there are a bunch of people online. Perhaps because of this conversation and some folks in person as well, I'd like to recognize you. Thank you all for being here. This is our, or one of our occasional reports on high school leveling up and proficiency. We've got a number of people presenting with a number of different slides. So be patient with me as I click on, on different things. And then it's different, I have them all up on my screen, but I can't remember who's who's now. So I'll start with Christie's slides, but when Val and Jake, when we're ready for yours, just remind me and remind me what your slides are called. So let me just share, share the screen. Okay. And Christie, I'm happy to, and this is always weird because you're looking at the slides on your computer, but I'm clicking the slides. So presumably you want me to click to the second page.
Yeah. So first, I just want to like, thank you all for allowing me to share with you tonight. I think all of us are well aware that there have been challenges on our work connected to the shifts we've been making at the high school over the past three years. And there are also some successes. And so I think I want to just start naming, by naming that. And tonight we're going to look at a little bit of both in the slideshow. So part of this work internally, particularly as a leader, I'm regularly, at the end of every quarter, digging into data around where we are. That is not always being shared out and I acknowledge that. So this is going to be a compilation of some things that we've been looking at this year, but then there's other pieces of data that I'm going to share that actually harp back to data we were looking at before we even made the change. And then some comparison to similar data from the past year or two. Just because I do think it's important to make that change, to make that comparison. I do want to acknowledge, and I'm going to start talking about slide two now for Peter. In addition to shifts we've made, I do think it's important to name that thinking about progress is extremely complex because there are so many things that are shifting. So just the work with the faculty and the students and thinking about how we're defining our honors work has evolved every single year. That's been informed by adult learning that's been happening and PD that continues to happen, that is ongoing. It's built into our school day through our professional learning groups. In addition to all the county time that we have and the summer professional development opportunities. And we've also had a tremendous number of opportunities for school visits, which you've heard about and you will hear a little bit more about this evening. I will be sharing later in the slideshow, some of the developing proficiency language and grading criteria. An impact of all of that on unit and assessment design, which has been a component of the work as well. Obviously, we continue to onboard new teachers as some teachers depart. And then there's also shifts that happen in teaching assignments. So just because some of you have taught English nine in the first year of this, we might have a different person teaching in the second year of this. And then there's the whole learning process that happens again. So every time those shifts happen, there's an impact on what outcomes we might expect. Changing demographics is huge. I'll be sharing some data about our current demographics compared to demographics over the previous five or six years. Obviously, we all acknowledge that there's a long-term impact, the disruption COVID had. And I just want to specifically name, the two big ones are around the SEL needs. And you've heard us talk about anxiety and depression being like really amped up coming out of that. That reflects in the needs of students in the classroom and their ability to learn and access. And attendance, which the state has named is a big priority. And that's something that we've been focused on. Coming out of the pandemic, re-engaging students in school as regularly as they should be there to learn effectively has been a challenge. And that is more true for some particular subsets of students than others. So that's something we're talking about all the time. And then the last one I just wanted to name is impacted technology, AI. Cause, you know, made its presence known in schools and cell phones is something that we have talked about. I just want to say, even this week when we were visiting Mount Graylock and Okona, both of those schools, no students' headphones in their hands. And so that's going to be something coming up as a future discussion, but it does impact student learning. So there's a lot of things at play. We talked about all of the data we're going to look at. So some demographic information. This is the demographic breakdown of our current ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, and then last year's twelfth graders. And if you look at the little bar graphs on the right, it's a little more obvious. High needs, remember, are defined as our students that are English learners, are students who are classified as low income. And that is now all done through direct certifications, so families who qualify for financial assistance in some other federal or state program and students who are on IUPs. And so, I mean, even if we just go back for, you know, our current, our current seniors and the year, the year that just graduated last year, we were under fifty percent. We're now solidly like over fifty percent in the, in the high needs categories.
So that's really quite remarkable, the shift in our student population, right? And even the low income thing has and continues to really change. When I came here, the, the high school percentages were, were half of what there are now.
All right. So some good news when looking at our honors distinction designation, how to use both pieces of language. Slide four just says good news.
No, no, I.
Are we going down to slide five?
I messed with this one.
Okay. So we know we are in the third year of the rollout of this. And this is our ninth graders who are classified as in one of, one or more of the high needs categories, earning honors distinction in one of our classes. Our first year of rolling this out, we had thirty-five percent of students who, who earned honors designation in one of our classes. Our second year was thirty-nine percent. And this year, this was at the end of quarter two, we were at forty-nine percent. Now, whether all forty-nine percent will actually earn honors distinction for the year, we will look at at the end of this year. And I can't predict that, so just sharing the data that we have. The next slide actually looks at a cohort. So cohort that this slide is about is our current junior class. They were the first group who obviously these shifts were put in place for. So this is data on the honors designation rates of earning. If they were not getting honors at all, if they were getting it in one or two classes, three to five classes. And then the last line is just a compilation of any of the one or more. And a breakdown of whether the student is in one of the categories considered a high needed category or if it's a category that's not. And over their three years in grade nine, grade ten, grade eleven, the earning of honors. Now, as they get into grade eleven, there are courses that are already classified as honors or advanced. Right? So there are students who are taking AP English. There are students who are taking honors for calculus. Those, those courses exist and we counted those as sections of students earning when they were in the eleven grade counts. So again, that's like complicated because the program itself changes a little bit as the students progress from the ninth to the tenth to the eleventh grade.
And those, those classes in eleventh, twelfth grade that are designated honors, those are weighted.
Those are weighted.
For everyone in the class.
Correct. That is. Yeah. The next slide actually just highlights the, the one little, that was highlighted on the last graph just about the high needs students that were taking three to five. It has increased. It's a very small increase. So we're probably only talking about a couple of students given the number, the total number of students we're looking at. The last slide again is focused on our current eleventh grade. And then a comparison actually to even prior to these shifts, the two thousand nineteen, nineteen twenty year, which again, that was an odd year in and of itself because that we didn't have a last quarter. So I just can remind, reminding folks that that was the year that we only did like three quarters of the year. And this is a breakdown by content area in looking at students who are participating and earning honors in AP across the various content areas. The word language is an interesting one and I actually think it has to do with the way the courses themselves are classified. So when you get into Spanish three, Spanish four, French three, French four, those are classified as honors in terms of weighting. Where that's not true for all of other subject areas in terms of the course honors in the eleventh grade. So I just want to call that out. The next couple of slides, we're going to look at some challenges. So when we are looking at the current tenth graders, there's, so our current tenth graders, we are seeing a decrease particularly in our high needs students who are earning honors in one or more from their ninth grade experience last year to their tenth grade experience this year. That's not the case for the students who are not in the high needs category. That's something that's, I wonder what's going on there. And then if we're looking at our eleventh grade students over the course, again, from the two thousand nineteen twenty through the pandemic years to this current year, and looking at participation in one or more honors or AP classes this year is substantial, well, it's looking like it's substantially lower for the high need students compared to the students who are not the high need students.
Do you have a hypothesis around that or not yet?
I honestly don't. And I have another slide a little later that we'll look at that also is just focused on AP, which is interesting in and of itself. So we'll get there later, but, yeah. Okay. So we're going to go into, and I'm going to yield my time, just for some additional perspectives and voice into the conversation. Because one of the things I appreciated at a, a school committee meeting recently was that you all heard from other folks. So I have invited Anne Donnell, who is here also. She is a co-teacher for English nine, who's Sherri Cahill. And so she's going to be talking a little bit about the honors distinction work in English nine. And has a hand up for all of them. I'm just going to let Sherri speak. And then Val Ivy is going to share some stuff about chemistry for the honors.
All right. So as Christie said, I am co-teaching this year ninth grade English, which Sherri Cahill. And this is our approach to honors distinction. I'm also co-teaching with Jay Carr. And next year we'll be co-teaching with Henry, some special education teacher who goes into general education classes three times a day. And what we're pressing out right now is just an overview of kind of like, Sherri put this together. And it's an overview of like where she started with honors distinction. At the end of every unit, we both reflect on this. What do we think we could have done better? And kind of what, some of it is in place for this year, but it's mostly will be in place for next year. So very quickly, just kind of going through this, we start off the year by asking students to practice summary. Summary through annotation and for honors distinction, it was do more. Summarize a couple more stories. And when we got to like the really true honors distinction part of it, it was do this without our support. So other students had graphic organizers. We helped them make a key for annotations, different colors. And for our honors students, we're like, show us independently that you can do this. And that's where we started. And as, you know, we reflected on them and like, okay, this one's pretty good. But maybe we just need more stories, some more depth of stories for students to, to explore. Our next unit that we worked on honors distinction is our self-selected reading project. And for this task, we kind of gave our honors students the opportunity to do like a private book study. They were given a separate book, which happened when we loaded the flies. While everybody else read a book of their choice, at their reading level and their interest level, we asked our honors, you know, our prospective honors students who were seeking honors designation to do Lord of the Flies and do a book study. Because what we recognized very quickly is that we wanted students to have a discussion. We wanted them to be able to talk and bounce ideas and kind of think about why did Golden come up with this as a symbol and kind of really get into the meat of things. The students that participated liked it. The problem that we found with it was that the book study also still really needed some more direct instruction. And although we were able to give them some of that, because there was two of us in that classroom during those two periods that I'm with her, it doesn't work the same way for every class that Sherri was teaching. And so the thought going forward by Sherri is to maybe click, create a like collection of books and have people, students who are doing honors distinction to, you know, choose books that have been like more curated for what we are looking for at honors distinction. And the idea of the whole project is that they're continuing to demonstrate and show their ability to summarize and to be able to share that information. And then our newest unit was a book called Sold by Patricia McCormick. And for this one, we started to have everyone back together, let all of the board redo this together. Wouldn't have some separate assignments in honors distinction, but the students themselves told us that's not what they wanted. That wasn't working for them. It is a simpler read. We pull out a lot of like symbolism, everything, but they could read the whole book over the course of two class periods and then go back. And that's what their preference were. The students that were more vocal about participating in honors distinction and what they wanted. And so we did again what we had done with the self-selected reading and we parsed them out separately and just tried to find a way to, to support them, what they were doing, to get them to study and to explore Nepal, sex trafficking, the other elements of what is covered in the story. While we get a little bit more straightforward approach with the other students. So it's, it's been interesting. We've not given up on honors distinction by any means, but there's been a lot of challenges. One is resources. Two classes, there's two of us, we have a little bit more flexibility. One class is really small, so they get a lot of like great attention and it works a little bit more perfectly in that setting. One of the other classes is very large, very ninth grade heavy with energy in the eighth period of the day when they're also wanting outside. So you can only imagine on a beautiful day like today, what that kind of can feel like at different times if they're like not really engaged with the work. So and then there's classes during the day that Sherri does on her own. She doesn't have myself or another co-teacher in there to support her. So she can't necessarily always do the same things. There is a lack of intrinsic motivation for students. I've been a part, I went to Monmouth. I've taught when there was honors classes, CD classes, all the way back when there were standards classes. And there is something to be said about, and I think. and I think the students that have participated in honors distinction have also really made that clear to us. There's something instead about like, I feel more motivated to do this when I have like-minded minds with me working on this similar idea and thought that aren't distracted because the door opens. So that's been something that we've been kind of that challenged by and we've been trying to battle. Tracking participation has been difficult because honors distinction is open to every student, which is great. And because of this, actually, we've had some students like here and there kind of be like, yeah, I can do that. And they'll do the honors distinction, which is great and has been wonderful. But you know, there's so much honors distinction that you have to participate in in order to get that weighted honors distinction like stamp at the end of the school year. And that's hard to track as they are kind of picking and choosing from smaller assignments to like the big end of the unit summatives. And really overall, just the structure of honors distinction has just been difficult in order to meet all the needs of our students. A student, a class of 12 students is a lot, is definitely a lot easier. You have a full class of 20, it's much more difficult, given the time of day, the mix of personalities and the varying needs. We have definitely done a lot of reflection. We've done a lot of talking to our students that say, ask them what they like, what they don't like. And the number one thing that we have heard, and then when I say this, I'm really peeing into the larger group of students we have participating in honors distinction, which is at that last period of the day. And they like the independence of the honors distinction. They like being able to do something of their own pace and be able to delve into some things a little bit, just a little deeper. What they have shared that they're missing is that really direct instruction that these young developed minds still require. Because they can do a lot on their own, they're very impressive human beings, but they do, they do need this really direct instruction sometimes in guidance on how to participate in a Socratic seminar. And they need that demonstration and they need more energy to feed off of that they don't always have.
And that's up this side up. Well, I actually want Val to go next before we do any questions, if that's okay? To give you both perspectives and then we can have questions for both of them. Is that okay?
Sure. So Val, just as you come up, is this link good or should I?
It should be good. There's it. Perfect. I was going to say you're going to have to make that bigger. Hi, those of you who don't know, Valerie and I, I teach chemistry. And I've been teaching chemistry. I think it's my seventh year. I started, I started. It was Amy Rex here.
I don't know.
Why?
Seven years ago.
Yes, originally hired to teach math, switched over in first week in October to teach some chemistry. My background is originally English and social studies. So. And I brought new things, however, I need them back because Oliver hasn't taken his test yet. So what I, sorry. Do you want to go to the next slide? I don't, yes, now I'm ready. Uh, wait, I just want to tell you, I could, as a teacher, of course, I have a little plan over there. I could do this for like three hours and we'd all just stay here. What I'm trying to do is just give you what I've seen you guys are looking for, like a how's it going? What are we doing? How are we doing it? Kind of thing, but I'm always open to continuing this conversation, to showing you other things that I've cut out of this. You're always welcome in my classroom. You don't have to let me know ahead of time, just come on in. Door is always open.
Yeah, that's not, that seems to be like a talking point a lot of people. People can't go to the school with a principal permission. That's, that's a, that's a very strict school policy. And you're like a TEP, you're like a TEP teacher who's invited us there.
I swear to you, you guys would get here the next year. I didn't think I'd get to the window. Alright, um, yes, please. Okay, so I was thinking about what are my objectives for chemistry in general? And how, like thinking about this. So what I came up with is it's to offer all my students an opportunity to master the same basic science skills, but at the same time be challenged at the level where they are. So in other words, learn about balancing equations, but how far into that you go and how you do it might depend on you. I want to, these, the, this one and the last one are fine. I want my students to get feedback on how they're doing. I want them to have choice in how they're assessed. And what I mean by that is I try to, most of my assessments have some element of student choice, where it's not just every single person is doing the exact same thing. And really recognizing that students, that human beings learn differently, have different strengths and weaknesses. And particularly as our population has changed with English language learners, not having the vocabulary, why they're struggling with chemistry. If, I don't, you know, I want it to be the chemistry and not, they don't know what yields mean. For example, ideally, I want chemistry to relate back to their lives and to have this be useful. And I've told them, I want them for the rest of their lives, every time they have to stop and put air in their tires to think about me and gas laws. So, and then the last thing I added, after talking with Jake about it actually, I want, I always try to make sure students have a chance to give me feedback on how it's going and what's working for them and what's not. So for example, they had an assessment with me today and they always stop kids on the way out. And like, how was that? Like, was there anything on there that you didn't expect? Did I? Because it's not my goal. My goal is not to trick them or to surprise them, but like to really have them know what's coming and to feel prepared for what, what I'm asking them. Okay, thank you. So I'm assuming you know this, but just, you know, look, it's not just words. It's like a whole picture. So we start with a new topic. We move on to practice, which generally now are on formatives. Whether they're graded or not, they're still formatives. They get feedback and then there's that loop of, and that might depend on a student. It might depend on a class. What about we need to do? And then ideally at the end, we get to decide. So this is one thing I'm really big on, which is that students need to have lots of ways to practice and receive feedback and not just as one thing. So I've put up there lots of different things that I can think of. So they do labs, they do Povols, which is, I forget what it stands for, but it's on some slide coming up. It basically means you don't know where you're going when you start. You start working on it and so Sarah and I are working together over here and we're answering our questions. And by the time we're done with it, whether it takes a day or two, we realize we've learned something about electronic configuration. But it isn't just a like, it's kind of exploratory. Ed puzzles, practice questions, simulations, things that are on the computer that show you different ways to do things, manipulative, lots of hands-on and then build things, labs. And I always try to have extra support options for students who need it. And then I try to always have in honors, it's an extension of the same topic, but in a different way or more depth. Yeah, I'll come back to that one. Basically, formative assessments in my mind are checkpoints for both the students and the teacher to see how everything's going, to know what's working and what's not working, to know like, I thought it was going to take us this long, it's going to take us less time. Or I thought it was going to take us this long, nope, it's going to take us longer. And or for students to get a sense of where they are and for me to be able to say, wow, you really got this. How about if I slipped through this honors thing? Or no, you really, hmm, maybe the way I'm explaining it isn't working for you. Let me show you this other video or let me show you this other way. Or do you like to read things? Because I can give you an article where you can read about it. Again, trying to get them, students to try to think about how they learn best. Because I feel like if that's something I can help them, they're going to need that for the rest of their lives, how you learn best. Okay, thank you. Maybe. Uh, whoop, that one. Okay. So what I gave you is my summative at the end of the gas laws. And what you'll see on there is that there's a page of gas law calculations and you need to choose, so on the cover of what you have is the grading. This is how I grade it, which gives me a little like what I, what I'm aiming towards. The first page is gas law calculations and they need to answer three out of those seven questions. They can do any seven, I mean, any three they want, but I show them at the top what I'm expecting. And those are all things that we practiced, which is labeling, naming the gas law, writing the equation, substituting, so they have to do that. The second page has a graph having to do with volume and pressure. And there are six questions asking them to interpret graphs. Three on that one, three having to do with volume, pressure, your relationship. The third page, so again, it looks like a lot, but it's not, like it really isn't. Like when you actually look at what you're doing, you're not answering the whole thing. The third page, there are three questions on there. It's pick one. And this is real life applications of the gas laws. So you pick one of those to explain what's happening in the real world based on what you've learned about gas laws. On the back of the third page is the honors page. And that is asking them to solve something using the ideal gas law, which isn't something that all of my students learn about. Because having done this, that our constant really throws them because there are so many variables that you know, whatever, you've seen it, you'll know and back and back. So they do find independent gas laws. As soon as I put them all together like that, students who have any type of anxiety around math, it's, it's a lot. So I save that for the honors folks. And that's that piece. Now, the last part is the excellence extension. And that's you pick one of those three scenarios or that other real life gas law or something. And the reason I want you to see this is because it's really important to me that excelling, that the way the current rating system is set up with the honors getting the GPA bump, that honors and excelling are not the same thing. Because I don't want only my honors students. I want students who aren't taking the class for honors to still be able to get an A. I want them to be able to be excelling at a CP level. I want honors students to be able to get a B. I don't feel like they have to be the same thing. And this is one that we've had a lot of conversations around in the F point office, the math and science teachers.
In every office.
Again. And the, what, what the other chemistry teacher I've kind of come up with is the way that we see honors is that it is another, more in-depth or more mathematical something on the same topic. The excelling piece comes from within you. And what I mean by that is like the honors, you're learning it from the teacher. So at some point, like honors is not an independent thing. It's, it's, I do a lot of small groups working. And so the honors group, where I'll say, hey, I'm going to go over this. Whoever wants to hear it, come hear it. Or I'm going to go over this again, if anybody wants to hear it, come on. That type of thing. And so the honors you can get all from me in the classroom. The excellent, I'm asking you to be able to take what you've learned and to do something else with it. Either to make an application to the real world or to think about it in a different way. Or Oliver would do for the excellent for the nuclear kind of thing. A lot of different people, so the excelling piece of nuclear, won't jump us off. They mentioned either, they mentioned relatives who are having chemotherapy. They talked about radiant metals. They talked about other, they talked about things happening in the world in terms of the deepening at the time. Bringing things in that aren't necessarily what we think of in chemistry. But yet, when you're talking about nuclear energy medicine weapons, that's all in our lives. Yeah, so again, it's important to me that the excelling option is available to everyone and that it's separate from that honors. You ready to do the next one? So yeah, I could do this for a really long time. I brought you a tour, I brought you a review. Basically, this is just a little like walkthrough of a unit. So I would give everyone, and again, I have them if you want them. I give everyone notes. There's examples, there's fadeaway supports where it starts with things in place. By the end, they're doing it on their own. Everyone in the class does hands-on balancing equations, making them, see what they look like. Okay, Peter, I'm ready? And then there's a bunch of other things that they do, including labs and that type of thing. But I also wanted to mention the other pieces. So I also make sure that students who might need more support, that there's other videos they can look at. There's, can you click on the balancing equations that under health simulation? Nope, not that one, that was a video.
This one.
That one. So just click on introduction, do you? Yeah, so that's just, just click on a couple of numbers up here. Yeah, okay, and they go to the tools and you'll see a little like a balance. Yeah, so just things like that. So that if students are struggling with the balancing, sometimes see it in different ways. Now, other students are totally, they hate this. They hate this so much. But again, just, which is why I've stopped trying to have everyone do everything, but more let me show you and like what works for them. We can go back to the.
Yes, sorry.
No, it's okay. Okay, and then, so lots of different things where if they're not sure how we're doing, they've got practice. And then I also have the honors extension for that one, is learning how to balance chemical equations using the algebraic method. Which is, I had a student tell me, and I went running to tell Mr. Mallory. She said it was the most fun she's ever had with math.
Sure, we can click on that too.
You don't need to. Yeah. Next one, please. So then I give them a quiz where again, they have pieces that are required. And then I have different levels of balancing equations. This was one where I did like the ski slope. So it started with like the bunny slope and that type of thing. And it went all the way up. So they had to choose wherever they were comfortable at with the difficulty of balancing equations. And then the options were, the honors students could use the algebraic method if they wanted to. And then the other option, any student could do the Greenland expedition, which is where you get dropped off in the helicopter and I'm throwing skis after you. You have to get back to Great Bearin Town. And that's a really, really, really hard balancing equation problem. Again, when it's right before the summative, I have options for lots of different practices, different levels, mildly and spicy. Try to get things with challenge options. And all the way up to the honors group, it's very difficult. Next one, please. And then the summative, they have things they have to do and then they have some optional pieces with that. I think that's it. Yes, perfect, good. Alright, so questions now, please do.
Yeah, sure, I'll start. Just going to the, mentioning the numerical grade with the, the emerging, developing profission. What about the numbers, like if you're 59 to 62, 74, 77? The ones in between, when the proficient and excelling? Is it, are you like half and half? Like let's say someone has a 90. Is proficient 77 to 88, excelling is 93 to 98?
Okay.
Is there like a, you get a label of half of each or how does that work?
You can get it in between. So for example, if you've got an emerging in your graphs and then merging in your, and this actually is from last year and I haven't updated this for the new members for this year. But looking at this, if you've got emerging for the top two and then developing for the third one, what that would be, you would get, it's the, it's the emerging of a little bit of developing. it's the, it's the emerging of a little bit of developing, which is a sixty.
Okay.
So, so that, this is again, looking at this, um, this is from last year and we've since redone those numbers. So like now they excel and you can get a one hundred. Um, and what the, like a ninety would be mostly proficient, but you do have a little bit where you are itself.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And my next question was, um, how many um, students do you have in your class, in these classes?
How many?
Uh, like per class, twenty, fifteen, twenty-five?
Twenty.
Twenty, and is that manageable for you?
It's not my favorite number.
What would be uh, ideal and what would be a break point for you?
So, so that's interesting because and Peter and I are talking about this today, is even though we're not leveled technically, there is still less than leveling that happens because we're a small school and because of what other things are offered. Um, so, so I have different classes that are somewhat leveled just by the nature of what time of day they're offered and what classes. Be- because, because if students are taking French three or if they're taking um, what are they taking, science, uh, geometry, no.
Algebra two.
Algebra two. So math is leveled, languages are leveled, if they're in band, very often math pulls out.
It's a domino schedule.
So there's, so there is still somewhat of, of a, a little bit of that. So it really depends. Um, my favorite number is probably about seventeen. And, and it's different because it also depends like everything. Every class has its own feel and its own personality. Um, the reason I'm saying that is more for the, well, two reasons. One is when it comes to like, if I have some students who need extra support and others who I'm wanting to make sure they're challenged enough. There's only me, I don't have a co-teacher, so it's, that helps me. Um, the biggest place where I see it is actually during labs. When they're all there and
It's just you.
Um, like, yes. And most of the time it's fine. Um, but there are days.
Do you have a parent in the car or do you have any classes with a parent?
Some classes, depends. Um, and but they're depending, they're not always there. Like there isn't a built-in. And again, most of the time it's totally fine. Um, and it, that's, we're just asking you know what my idea of a grade is.
Okay, and so you said you've been here for seven years and you obviously taught, did you teach tenth grade chemistry?
I did.
Previous to this?
I did, and I ha- I was a CP teacher. I didn't do it for honors.
So did you find it the same, easier, difficult, different comparing this type of style versus that type, but for the teacher themselves? Like your, your work, your, how, how much it takes out of you personally, the burnout rate, etc.
I do, um, it's different. It's a different medium, I'm sorry. You guys are way more stressful.
Jason, he's stressing every time.
Yeah. You notice I'm facing him and not giving.
Trying to make things easy.
Yeah. I would say it's different. And what I mean by that is, yes, it is more challenging trying to make sure all of these different groups are getting what I want them to get, right? However, at the same time, I like it so much more because the the classroom in general, the students are more invested and more interested in it. And what I have seen is having that, those classes next. I've seen students do things that they never would have done if they hadn't had someone else. I don't, being exposed to what students their age can do. And if I can remember a student of Ant that we had in common saying to me, I didn't know sophomores could do this, right? And then him being inspired to do more. And that to me is what we want, you know? I, so, so it's a different energy level. Um, I enjoy it more.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna keep it rolling, I'm gonna turn it in now, sorry. So when you, you said there was two different classes, where one small.
I mean, one small, much larger.
Like, like how big is, much bigger.
Much bigger. It is a little over double. You can ask Jake, my math skills aren't that great. Um, we are like at twenty.
At twenty, okay.
At twenty for that one.
And that's where you feel things can go off the rails at some point?
Yes, and, and part of it is kind of gay.
Yeah.
Um, the other part is, um, again, because of other things at play, the number of students on INPs and five oh fours is close to half in that class.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a large number.
Gotcha. And in the other classes, what did you say, twelve?
Um, we actually shift us to the much bigger class. The number, again, because of personalities and trying to meet the individual needs of students. It's one of those things where Kayden and I felt like, oh my goodness, I don't think we can take one more student in a period. But we knew that that student would be better at that time of day, especially if they're separated from this student. So that was part of why that our numbers are like they are and are so different from each other.
And so one last thing, you said you're not always in the class. Did you say?
I mean, I'm not always in the class.
So when you're not in the class, is the same cohort of students in there or when you?
Everything is still the same. So I oftentimes will get pulled for if I have an IMP meeting. Um, if I have a student who is in a moment of just needing some different supports.
Not necessarily someone in this class.
It doesn't necessarily have to be someone in that class. It can be someone outside of that class that is one of my students in another classroom. And then Sheri does teach other classes without myself there. She's blessed, she gets TAs, everyone wants to, you know, in her class with her. And there are parents available for some of our students. So the parent role in the classroom really depends on the students that they're there to support. Are they there as a classroom parent or are they there for the individual needs of a specific student?
Sorry for giving up so much time.
We've got hours more.
Hi, you know, I just sit here all my hours.
Yeah, that's interesting. Who else has questions?
I have, I have probably more for Christie. Um, um, but, but how you explain how you do the grading versus the honors designation was exactly how I understood it was supposed to be. And I'm not sure that it's always happening the way it's supposed to be. And you guys have been eating, why, I don't understand why that is. I mean, this is like, you explained to me what I thought was supposed to be happening. And why is, is that really happening all of this and not why?
I think it has been a real challenge and value to do it around the like unpacking the what is the difference between a student exceeding proficiency in a skill that we're trying to develop versus um, what is the like additional depth connected to the topic that they're being asked to explore? And, and I think it's, you know, it varies by subject area, it varies by, I think, um, you know, um, people's um, like expertise in terms of their wheelhouse in, in style of teaching, right? Um, I think that um, to do this well, it works better, and I'm getting a little off track, I want to come back to our presentation because I have two other people that want to share some stuff. But um, I think that um part of the, the model of this works better when there is an element of um, a student-centered approach in the classroom that allows for the personalization to happen and the teacher's role becomes much more like, yes, you're delivering material, but you're also more of a coach in the classroom than like the, the like, the you know, sage on stage, which like historically, I mean, that's how I grew up, being instructed. I was in a desk and the teacher was, was talking to me. And um, I think that model of instruction does not match as well um, with the shift that we made. And so um, teachers' comfort level with, with adjusting their own practice in terms of instruction, I think different people are in different phases of that. Um, so I'm, I am going to go ahead and go back to Peter and, and
No, no, that's, that's okay.
But I definitely want Jake and Oliver are up next because we're in this little section of additional perspectives. And um, we just had a team who went up to, um, they, they were supported um, searching with funding from Next Generation Learning Challenges. Um, and you are aware that you've had teams go before. So NGLC actually supported the um, the trip last year out to California. Like Peter was on with a team, we had students go out there. This fall, we have students and faculty go up to Maine, um, to Casco Bay. Um, Jake and Oliver were on the team that just went to Vermont and they visited two schools. And they have a, a modified presentation that they had done up there. I'm just going to turn it over to them and Peter, if you could click on the link to go to their slides. Uh, they're going to share. Yeah, what, what they're going to share.
Thanks, Chris, I appreciate it. Um, my name is Jake Hart, I'm a first-year teacher and a math teacher at Monument.
I'm Oliver Curtis, I'm a sophomore at Monument.
And I think it's important before we go any further, just to name all the folks that were on the team that took the trip to Vermont as part of the learning excursion. So we had some folks from Monument, Elsa Hernandez, Marty Allen, Jamie Downer, Pete Lurgio and student Juan Higa. And then from Du Bois, we had Aron Satsu, Galdo Shapiro, Berma Milliken, Sam Ernst and Maida Week. And then from the district, Beth Cook joined us as well. Um, and we haven't had an opportunity since that trip, which took place just before equal break, to reconvene as a group. Um, so this is our presentation, which we'll, we'll get to in a minute, um, that we gave at that learning excursion to the other schools. And we thought that would be the best way to present um, all the information and all the different things that we saw without um adding our own voices and changing what might come out of that team. And also should name the fact that this guy here is amazing and he's also one of the busiest guys I know. So we have not yet had the opportunity to work through these slides together. So this will be our first time and I hope you'll give us the benefit of the doubt as we decide who's going to uh, talk about which items here. Um, I do want to just note that we can't speak for the Monument team. We haven't yet had the opportunity to present the information um that we'll share with you this evening to the Monument team. And I'm not sure what's happened at the middle school in that regard. Um, but we're just here to share our perspective and the things we saw and we'll be as factual as we can. And uh, and we intend to, to keep it that way. Yeah.
Anything you want to add before we move forward? Yeah, just straight facts, keep our opinions about what we saw, just tell you what we saw.
Yeah, um, and I would just add, clearly we have a, a, a great conversation happening. And I think that I am really appreciative of the fact that I was able to go on this learning excursion and enlighten me to some of the things um, that we're doing and how they might progress um, in, 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 in different ways. And I, I'm really grateful to have had the opportunity. So with that said, I think we can go to the next slide. And again, this slideshow was presented to the other schools and folks in Vermont. So unfortunately, you're not the intended audience, but I think this is the best um, way we can convey our understanding of what we saw. And I think, you want to?
Sure, I can, I can say this one. Um, so we visited three schools, uh, Harwood Union, Wunuski and Twinfield. Um, and when we spoke to students there, they always, and we asked them, why do you think your school is, is moving towards de-leveling and proficiency-based system? Why, why do you, why, why do you want to be at school? They had a, they had a culture, they all knew where they were going. They all were bought in, they all, they all knew why. And I think that's something we laughed at at Monument. If you ask a student, why are we going to a proficiency-based system? Something might say, well, this is what we were told to do. This is, like, they don't, we don't understand why we're going that way. We need, we need that North Star, as we put it.
Yeah, and I would just add that I think we need to be more deliberate about expressing the why behind the different changes that we're making. And I, I don't want this presentation to effectuate any immediate change because I think that it's really crucial, like Oliver said, that we have folks bought in to the things that we saw. So although we are going to mention some possible shifts that we could make specifically at Monument and we can't really speak for the, the Du Bois team. Um, I wouldn't want any of that to move forward without having had some input from the other folks at Monument, students and staff. Um, but like Oliver said, we, we've got to build a culture and get some folks in on what we're, what we've got to offer. I think with that, we can move to our next slide. Um, and, and student voice, and then we can skip right over this one, it's only got two words. But student voice is certainly a strong suit at Monument. Um, we've got a really robust SOB uh, group and I think Oliver could probably speak better as SOB than I can.
Yeah, we've, we have a wonderful subcommittee, SOB, and we've, there's five some five subcommittees, is that it? Um, that are, that cover different realms of the school and improving issues and problems that come up with our school. And it's centered around the student setting. It was honestly a wonderful thing that we have that not many other schools have. I think we're a little bit ahead of game in this area and that was really wonderful to see that. We're, we do really well in the student voice aspect.
Yeah, and we have folks at those schools asking for RDA as it pertains to our SOB, our Student Adult Advisory Board and um, other facets of our uh, student adult connection. Um, we also obviously have student reps on the school committee. Um, but now I think we can shift to the next slide. And feel free to stop me at any point with questions. Um, but we've sort of designed this as where we are now and where we hope to go. So we'd love to be able to build some more time into our daily schedule to give a, a, a wider gamut of students the opportunity to, to voice their opinions. Um, and right now, we're running into some problems with SOB and maybe you can jump in and talk about that.
Yeah, so I've done a lot of work for SOB over this year and I've missed hours of class time working on these things because we meet during class and then for, if I'm doing a project with some other students, I have to miss class time I'm missing. Tomorrow, I'm going to miss three classes interviewing teachers and that's unacceptable. I can't spend that much class time for other projects. Um, so we need to find a way to build the student voice into our daily schedule so it's also more accessible to more students.
And we, we should be able to open other clubs and opportunities to um, of a wider gamut of students if, if possible. And you'll notice that we've got ELO highlighted on this tab and, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Um, but I, I think that it's important to note that there are certain subsets of our population who haven't had access to things like SOB, whether it be because they're working a job to support their family or because they can't get a ride to school when SOB meets before the first bell. Um, so we, I think we need to be more intentional about being equitable across the board uh, in terms of our student voice. And I think we can move on. So here we get to talk about ELO, Flex Time and Advisory. Let's get right ahead to the next slide. So one of the schools we visited, Harwood Union, and personally, I felt like that school nerded ours, the closest of the three we visited. If you're great. Um, they had built into their day a roughly two-hour period at the end of each day uh, that they refer to as ELO or Extended Learning Opportunities. And I think that we all were sort of like jawing for, this is, this is giving teachers and students access to more of that time we were just mentioning. Um, they have what, what I believe is called the Adaptive Schedular Extension in Power School, which gives students the ability to register for a certain um extension club activity during that yellow time. So like we talk about leg skills, I mean, asking students to register for what they need most at that time um, was very uh, interesting to see. And teachers also had the ability to override that choice and request that a student join them in their room for that yellow block.
Um, and just, are they doing this like on a day-to-day basis?
This is a day-to-day basis. So they had a short advisory period every morning, I think it was roughly ten minutes. And in that time, uh, all students were required to register for their ELO block that afternoon. There was some administrative challenges there. They had one staff member who was dedicated to verifying that each student was registered for a ELO at the end of the day. Um, and teachers were required to offer ELOs. I believe it was four of the five days of the week and that fifth was a prep period for that. But the ELOs were not uh, intended to create more preparatory work for the, the teachers. It was more of an opportunity to build in support time for um their academic classes or other uh, opportunities. And I, I would mention here that we were able to talk to a, I believe it was a US history teacher who was offering his honors designation equivalent during the yellow time. So he had students completing a project outside of class. And then they had to attend, I believe it was two ELOs um, a quarter where students could then connect about the work that they had done in terms of whatever honors extension that was. And I think that um, definitely ties into some of the points we heard earlier about not having that opportunity to actually connect about the honors level work. Um, in, in some cases, it can just feel like more work um, overall. So that is really interesting. Um in in some cases, it can just feel like more work um overall. So that is really interesting.
Can you go to the next slide, Peter?
Yeah.
So, yeah, th- this is sort of where we hope to go, and thank you, Christy. Um but again, we haven't had the opportunity to bring this back to our staff. At Monument, we thought that maybe Phase One could be the uh the implementation of ELO in our current advisory system, which is, uh we have Advisory Tuesday and Thursdays for roughly thirty minutes. Actually, that's exactly thirty minutes. Um so we thought that maybe we could take that opportunity to build in some yellow time and use that block as additional supports, uh whether it be academic or in terms of SOB maybe, or other groups and clubs like that.
I I can look this up later, but but what did they, if it's a zero-sum game and they're only X number of hours on a school day?
Yeah.
What what did they, what did they even trade off for this?
Great question. So we, I personally didn't, but one of the members of our team calculated their learning time and it was more than ours. So they were on a block schedule. So they were A B days, and they were all sort of the long blocks that we have now on our Tuesdays and Thursdays. So they were only seeing a class twice a week or three times a week, depending on the rotation. Um and what they did eliminate was study halls. So there was no study halls whatsoever. Um and that time was used to work with students.
That says the yellow block could be used as a study hall for a student if that student needed it.
Right. And if they did offer, like the gym was an option, so if students were all caught up on whatever um academic things they needed to be uh currently, they could go play basketball in the gym and connect that way. Um and there were some administrative limitations on where they they can't go to the gym every yellow. So there was people tracking when they were gymming. Although they said that. Richard, you want to? All right, we can move to the next slide. Okay, and then one more beyond that. So I think I'll just say personally, in fact, one. No, that's good. Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. No, you're good. Um I think personally, I'd just say that um I was really impressed with the onboarding process that these schools had, specifically Harwood shared a slideshow with us that introduced the ideas of deleveling, honors designation, and proficiency-based learning um and got new faculty members bought in. And I think we can do a better job of communicating across the board about why we're making the changes that we're making. For me personally, it was so eye-opening to get to experience a system that where these things are implemented. And in no way should we take what Vermont does and transplant it here. But it was nice for me as a young professional in my first year of teaching to have that experience and see what it, what the finish line that we're trying to achieve.
How many years ahead of us are they?
That's a great question.
Ten years into this?
Yeah, it's around ten. So Vermont passed legislation about ten years ago requiring that schools move to proficiency-based learning. And um I'm not sure if deleveling was part of that legislation, but certainly the proficiency-based learning was. Um so right now, I think there there's certainly a difference between where the the middle school is and the high school. Um but we're sort of um in different places all across the board. So the math department might be at a different place, the science department, et cetera. And I think what was most impressive about those schools is how they had consolidated. So with that, I think we can move to the next slide.
Sure.
You don't have to.
Um yeah, I don't care. Um so where do y'all go? So we wanna revisit what we uh what it's like a?
Competencies.
We we wanna revisit our competencies and like like narrow them so that they 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 reflect more transferable skills in the real world. Um so shifting more from focus on content to skills. Um collaborate between classes, so like a history class and an English class. The English class might read The Great Gatsby while the history class is uh doing a unit on the nineteen twenties, like an interdisciplinary curriculum. Um design a report card that's easy to read, especially if we need to report in a traditional system for college reasons. Um align our transferable skills and our competencies to portrait of a graduate. Um build common rubrics so that students aren't seeing twelve different rubrics for eight classes. Um and rather than just changing like how and why we're uh reporting, change the how of the teaching, shifting from more student folk, uh teacher-focused to more student-focused. And then lastly, get community buy-in in the, in the changes that we're making so that we're all on, we all understand why we're moving in a certain direction.
Right. And seeing a proficiency-based report card was just really um helpful for myself. Um and I probably should have seeked one out early on, but um within the transition, I think we're all sort of trying to figure out how to use proficiencies while still reporting in a traditional system. Um and again, I would just highlight the community buy-in aspect. The 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 staff specifically at Harwood, and there was one school that we visited that was not bought in. Um but at Harwood, they had a beautiful document, you have hyperlinks all over the place um that linked to common rubrics across the school. So any staff member, any student could access the rubric for a particular competency and know exactly how they will be assessed regardless of the context or class that they might be in at the moment. Um and that was another interesting aspect of of the Harwood um approach to proficiency-based grading and in in learning, like like Oliver said, I think might be the more crucial part. We're gonna have to report rates somehow, but really, it's it's the learning and the teaching that um is important. And I think that concludes our slideshow. Um but we do have, and again, this was presented to folks from all different uh parts of New England. I think we had other Massachusetts schools with us and a few from New Hampshire. Um so so that was the intended audience. Um and and just to close, I think, well, how about you take it?
Yeah, so these these schools, what we saw was awesome. It was eye-opening. I don't think they, that they don't, they don't have it all figured out. I don't think anybody has it all figured out. So I think it's important to note that while they were doing some things better than we are, maybe, we're also doing some things well. And maybe some of the things that they're implementing aren't working so well. I think it's important to to, it's not that they have it all figured out. It's more nuanced than that. And whatever direction we go in, we need to take care in where we go 'cause we're dealing with the education of of kids.
And I would note that um it it appeared in in many cases that our school is more academically rigorous than the other three that we visited, particularly one of them, we visited on a wacky Wednesday where the majority of the student body was not at school, whether they be participating in internship internship programs or mentor mentee programs. Um and and I believe Harwood only offered up to algebra two. It's part of their math program, and as a math person myself, I was like, oh, just algebra two. So I I think they're using their resources in different ways. And I, again, in no way should we take exactly what they're doing and try to replicate it here. If anything, it was just an opportunity to see the things that we're trying to achieve in action um and then reflect on 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 them that way. And I I think across the board, what all three schools certainly had was a great culture and community where folks felt part of something bigger than themselves and could work in multiple different ways to achieve whatever shared outcome school experience was. Another cool thing we saw, um and I'll wrap up shortly, at Winuski High School, which was just a melting pot of diversity, and it was just beautiful to see. They had a student-led assembly, um which is another idea we would love to explore. And two um girls got up and did a dance routine. And I have never seen an auditorium so supportive, and Oliver was saying, I was just crying. I'm crying, but I'm just crying. And I'd love to be able to achieve that sense of community at Monument and in the larger verticals school district.
Um I would also like to touch on one thing that I was, I was really thinking back to the trip a lot recently, especially when I was talking to a certain teacher. Um and I was thinking, one of the big things that all three, and especially the the school that we liked the most, had was they had clear expectations for their students. So incoming freshmen, they would set that bar for those freshmen. They would set that high. Right now, I think at Monument, and that teacher I was talking to agreed, we set that bar, we set that bar very, very low. And the students, they don't, I like, so for me, when I was incoming freshman, I was told, this is high school. We have to take this really seriously. Like, this is your future life. It's high school. And then a month in, I was like, this is a complete joke. Like, um people aren't expecting me to edit anything. Students around me aren't doing their homework. I'm in class. I've done my homework. Oh, they're just gonna go over in class because, well, more than half the kids didn't do their homework. So students right now, especially in the freshman class, are learning that doing the bare minimum is okay. And I would, I would hope you guys would agree that the bare, that that's not something we want in our students. And so if we set the bar high at the start of their high school period, they will meet that bar, and that will become the bare minimum. That will become the minimum for them. And this would increase, one, this would increase rigor. This would also increase engagement. Because once, so for me, I was disengaged because we're going over the homework in class that I did last night, and now I'm bored. So I'm disengaged. I'm not focused on the lesson. But if ever, then everybody's on the same page and ev- everybody's at this bar, then we can all move forward and be engaged and rigorous for all students. And not, the bar being so low also creates a culture of apathy. And students are just doing enough to get by. They place less value on their education because they're like, oh, I don't have to do this. It doesn't matter. Like, teachers are pushing kids over sixty-five just because they don't want to fail students. And so students that should be failing are passing classes. So I just think we need to, this, these schools in Vermont had high expectations for their students. And these students would meet these expectations, and even if they were a little below those expectations, they're better than if we set the expectations down here.
Yeah, I think I I would agree with much of what Oliver said. Um it was clear that despite the different style of reporting and the different opportunities for honors distinction, the bar was quite high. And students knew that. Um and and I I would note that many of the schools told us uh that there was a lot of transitionary challenges over the decade that they've encountered this. Um so I don't, while we might be in a transitionary period, I think we certainly need to reflect on what we're doing and collect data um and and share that data. But there's certainly a higher standard that students are expected or that students feel they are expected within the system that has been built over the course of a decade in those Vermont schools.
No, I'm, I can't thank the two of you enough. Every once in a while, people come here and just speak the truth, right? And and we need to raise the bar. There's a lot to be said about rigor. It's great to get a sort of the run of our own time and place and see people do it with similar resources and fairly similar contexts. Uh and and I think um this, what you're bringing up is happening, those conversations are happening in other places. But I think this is one of those catalyzing moments. Uh and we'll see, we'll see a lot come out of this.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, so I promised only a few more slides. Again, I had a little bit more.
That's all right.
And then I'm sure there were also more questions.
Yes.
So we're on slide fifteen now.
We're done for a few days.
Nope, go back. Okay, um so I just do wanna um also, it's actually something that came up uh when Oliver and Jake were sharing in terms of looking at other schools and whether they are um in the proficiency work itself. Um so last year, I believe we shared at the end of the year that we had uh completed our draft, what we were referencing as our proficiency matrix, which was the um skills by content area and then um broken down into what we've referenced um as performance indicators. Those performance indicators are what the departments are working, have been working to share our building scoring criteria. Um what I would agree with Oliver and Jake on is that there are different departments at the high school, and I think the both of them at the high school also are in very different places on this. So I just am sharing a little snippet from the English department. They've been working on scoring criteria for all of their performance indicators and actually have drafts for all of them this year. So this is, and and the the link is in um the slideshow, so you can look at this in more detail later. Um but this is the graduation competency one for our ALA department is reading, right? Can stu-, what are, what are students' skill in reading? And then it breaks down into the very specific things um that an English teacher would be looking for relative to a student's skill in reading. So the first one is around determining themes, central ideas, um analyzing the development of that, and then defining what it means to be beginning, developing, meeting, and exceeding in those skills. So the next, there's a couple of things that'll be the next phase of this. Uh once the uh grading criteria are all defined, the stu-, the the departments are going to need to be mapping these across the uh curriculum to make sure that all of the indicators are being assessed, right? Where are they assessed in English nine? Where are they assessed in English ten? That map has to be created, and then um this language has to be applied. And teachers in the professional learning groups that meet weekly who really need to start to bring student work to the table um look at student work as a, as a, as as they apply those rubrics so that the rubrics can be refined. Like, that is what any schools who go through this process have to go through, that process of writing these rating criteria and then refining the rating criteria by actually looking at student work together. So that's a part of the process.
Do you see that as sort of part of the way to raise the bar in terms of rigor?
Absolutely.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
We can't just like buy that someplace? Like, somebody, somebody hasn't even done this? This is like, you know, I mean, like.
It's like the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, like, why, why is every school doing this on their own?
So so to be clear, like, most of the um competencies and performance indicators are coming out of the national standards, right?
Yeah.
So like, the the language that's in our um English department's competencies and performance indicators is all coming out of like Massachusetts frameworks. The language that's coming, that's in the math is all the national standards for teaching mathematics. And then the the language for the skill development aligns with that.
Yeah.
The the grading criteria themselves, um I think, yes, you can have drafts that are kind of created and modify them. But at the, the key to the work isn't about what's written on the paper. It's how the teachers and students share the understanding of that language. And honestly, to Peter's point, like, that's what raises the bar, that everyone has a shared understanding of what it means to meet um proficiency and what it means to exceed proficiency. And when teachers are applying these criteria to like assessing student work, they're doing it in a way that's aligned and that the students understand. So that that it has to be a process to that because otherwise, I'm just taking someone else's thing and applying it to an assessment that I've written, and the teacher next door might be doing it differently. The students that are in the classrooms are experiencing it differently, to Oliver's point, right? I've seen twelve different rubrics for the same skill. It's confusing, right? And that's that alignment process that really has to happen.
Right, and then people internalize it, and then it gets to the thing where you ask a tenth grader what the skills are for for reading or presenting something, and and then maybe at the beginning of the year, they don't know. But by the middle of the year, they they know, internalize it, and and are striving towards that.
All right, so the next little part is where I just wanted to look back a little bit for some comparison. And so on slide seventeen, um this is actually a chart, and there were, we had three years of data. I just pulled up the eighteen, nineteen um as a point of reference. This was data that we had been examining um before we even moved into um our pandemic years. Uh I was the director of learning and teaching when we were doing this work. Um so what we had done here was taken the entire population of the school, five hundred and twenty-six students. We were looking at enrollment data in various categories. And so, you know, there were one thousand three hundred and twenty-three enrollments in CP classes at the time, right? And one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven enrollments in honors, uh two hundred and six enrollments in AP. So like, this is like individual seats, and you might have a student who's in three AP classes, so that counts as three enrollments. And then we were looking at the percentage of students in particular populations um and the breakdown in the overall population of the school, and then how those groups were represented in various classes. Um what was really striking, um and it went over a three-year period, particularly when we looked at AP, we had no special education students taking AP courses, and that was over three, like a three-year span that we were. We had no special education students taking AP courses and that was over three, like a three-year span that we were looking at. Uh, which, you know, I, I said at the time, and this quote again goes back to like two thousand eighteen, nineteen. So what that means in terms of our practice at the time is that if I'm a parent of a student in second grade who's diagnosed with some sort of learning disability and has been on an IEP, uh, if we don't change anything about our system, the chances of them ever taking an AP class at Virchill Hills is like zero. And that wasn't okay, right? Um, same thing, um, when we look at like our, the underrepresentation of our low-income students in AP classes and obviously the zero in ELL. So if we go to the next slide, what I did was I took just a little subset of this from that two thousand eighteen, nineteen, um, uh, data. And then I took the, um, current juniors, because this is the first cohort of students that have made it to their junior year to be in AP and advanced classes. And I counted the number of seats that our current juniors are in for AP. And I then looked at the breakdown demographically of that um, and calculated how many of those seats were students that are special education, five oh four, low income, ELL. We actually have made a little bit of progress. We have not made any progress for our English learners. The other thing I also want to draw attention to is that the actual percentages in every single category have increased. So we have now almost seventeen percent of students that are special education. We have eleven and a half percent where it was six and a half percent of students on Bible boards. That's can directly connected to students' social, emotional wellbeing coming out of the pandemic. We have forty percent of students that are low income and we're up to seven and a half percent of students that are English language learners. So I, I named this because, um, I, I, I think it's important to remember some of the why that we were discussing when we launched into the shifts that we, um, that we have implemented. And while I definitely recognize challenges that we are facing and think, and think deeply on a regular basis about ways in which, uh, we can do better to serve all of our students. Um, I do just want to, um, highlight that, that for these populations, these growing populations, um, like this is one of the goals we had set out is that we wanted to see growth and improvement here. So, um, this will be something that really should be tracked beyond us this year. Uh, the next three slides are work that I was doing this fall when we were doing MCAS, um, analysis. And I had actually, um, wanted to look back at some, again, pre-pandemic data around MCAS and do some comparison, um, to, to where we are currently. And you know, we've talked about this before in our work, particularly in science. Um, so here, um, what I have is the district, um, in the first column is like district for twenty twenty-three and then the state in twenty twenty-three, the district performance and then the state performance. And the first, the first column, it says M and E, which stands for meeting and exceeding, right? But I've added those together. So students who are meeting and exceeding proficiency, um, on MCAS sciences um, and how we compare it to the state. And so the first, um, table at the top is all students, all of our students. And then the one at the bottom, um, just shows students who are in the high needs category. And I also along the edge marked out the percentage of students that were tested that are in the high needs category. So like in twenty twenty-three in the district, fifty-three percent of that, um, of the students is that were, that took the science were, um, classified as high needs, uh, where the state level is fifty-one, right? So, um, you can see, um, we've made, we definitely have made gains in science because, um, pre-pandemic, we were running pretty evenly with the state. And the last two years, we've overachieved, um, in terms of the comparison to the state. If we go to the next slide, this is the, um, ELA. So same layout, I don't need to talk through it all again, you know what it is. Um, this, um, the class, the one that is labeled, um, twenty twenty-three, the very top row of this is our junior cohort. So it's the students that were under the fir-, the first, um, shift in, in, in our practices. Um, they were the first class that was tested, that was tested for MCAS in ELA. Um, and it's, it's, you know, in terms of looking at us relative to the state, it's pretty consistent. There, there was not any dramatic increase and there was not any dramatic decrease. And that's true for both all students and for our high need students. And then the last one is math. Um, again, all students down below, you can dig into this more, but I did just want to share this. Um, data are spread from the state and state pretty consistent, um, in, in both. It might have gone down a little bit for all students in that top box. I do wanna, again, just say the name, math is the place where, um, even though we do offer honors distinction and students do come in in a more leveled way, right? Students either are taking algebra or they're taking geometry. So there is the tracking.
The thing I'll underline in this is as you look at this, look at how the percentage of high need students is going up in the context of what's happening with the rest of the data, right? It's really.
Alright, so now, I just want to talk a little bit about, um, next steps. Um, we're continuing to do surveying of students and families. We'll actually be pushing out our end of year surveys, um, in a couple of weeks, um, asking for feedback on our work. Um, and that is other data that we track, uh, and should share. Jake and Oliver talked a lot about the youth and adult partnership. Um, I think we've made quite a lot of improvement, um, in that work, although there's, there's places where it's not working. Like Oliver alluded to, I don't want she to talk about the class because of it. So having a schedule at some point that actually supports that, uh, work would be an advantage. Um, I do, I do believe, um, youth and adults working together on this, um, holds a lot of, um, potential in terms of addressing things that aren't working, um, in a, um, more timely manner. The PD work that we continue to do, I'm thinking about what that's gonna look like, uh, in years to come is gonna be incredibly important. Um, I want to highlight at the high school level, I do think our professional learning groups, the teacher groups that meet during the week. I think, um, we have made a tremendous amount of growth in my five years. Um, the, the structure of them now is, uh, we, we, they, all of the groups engage each quarter is called a learning cycle. Um, and they, um, look at, um, what is, um, best practice in instruction. So it's elements of effective instruction. They've done cycles, um, using feedback in class. This last one, they just did a cycle on formative assessment and how teachers can use data, um, to better differentiate in the classroom. Um, next year, um, we're already in the process of talking about what they might do in the fall. And one of the things that, um, I think might be at the top of the list is complex thinking and what structural practices promote complex thinking in the classroom. Um, so I think that, um, those professional learning communities are critical, um, to the continued development of all of this. I already alluded to the mapping proficiencies. Um, I think that there needs to be continued like refinement around this connection between honors distinction and a proficiency-based learning. So like Rich, to your point, the struggle around the like exceeding versus honors distinction, uh, and what that is. Um, making adjustments to course offerings, um, both to expand opportunities and to better support students. Um, so there are, um, places where, um, how we enroll students and what the exact course offerings are. I think particularly as students move into tenth grade and we think about like what is their pathway and what is their goal? How do we best support them? Um, there are opportunities for conversation, um, and improvement there. Um, and then the considerations for class size, right, that you were alluding to. Um, co-teaching is an interesting one. I raised this to our, um, um, building principal team this year. Um, in terms of, it is an incredibly supportive practice. And when we think about scheduling students, it's a real constraint in terms of how students wind up being grouped together and percentages of students that are on IEPs needing to be put in, um, certain classes together. And so, um, one of the conversations that I've had with Kate Burzel, um, is just around looking at, um, where, where is co-teaching, um, like helpful? Because it could be helpful to any student and, and, and for what students is it actually necessary? And, and do we have those practices actually as refined as we need to as a district? Um, and then I even just put up here, even space considerations as, as the district is talking and thinking about a new building. And I thought about like when we were up at Wacona and they had these pods that they had created. And part of the use of space when Am Rob talked to us was around the thinking about the interdisciplinary opportunities that that could provide. Like when we think about the ninth grade as a team working together and then how is the building itself actually going to either support or detract from the educational goals? And I think that, that conversation is neglected, right? It's important. Um, and then obviously the last slide, there's, we have to do better at communicating, uh, inviting teachers tonight like we did to talk about their work, um, share specific examples, um, track our data trends and present that, um, so that the community sees it. Um, I really appreciated what, um, Jake and Oliver were talking about in terms of making sure like everyone understands the why we're doing this. Everyone is bought in, the people who have some struggle around it feel like their voice is heard and their struggles are being addressed and they're not being ignored. I think that's really important. Um, and I think that a thing that's coming in the future, but we're not there, it's the last bullet point. Examining and, and looking at our post-secondary data as, as the current juniors sort of head off to whatever they're gonna do beyond high school. I think that's a really important thing too. So, wow, sorry, this was really long.
Anyone have any quick questions or comments?
I have lots of comments, but they're not quick.
I was saying, but I, I do feel like I, um, well, first of all, I want to thank everybody that presented tonight. There was so much wonderful information that really, it's very clear that everybody's very invested in the, the students and the schools. Um, I just feel like I need to bring up, because I've been talking to some teachers and parents and students about de-leveling specifically and it sounds like, you know, there are some challenges with it. And I just, I want to make sure we kind of address those challenges. Um, because it sounds like teachers are really struggling and kids are not getting, um, the rigor that they need. And so, and I've heard that the academic rigor has gone down. Um, and so I just want to make sure that, um, we're really talking about that and considering, um, figure out something we can do to make it better, um, as best as we can.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's, it's a, uh, serious concern that we've heard and, and we continue to work on it. And, and I want to be careful because we're two and a half hours into this meeting. But, but I, I think we, we continue the conversation, uh, in, in, in two weeks about this and, and, and some of the things we're, we're thinking about. And, and there's some, there's some small changes that are relatively easy to implement. And there are some bigger changes that may be aspirational, right? Like redoing the schedule, um, eliminating study halls, going to an Evo block is in a, uh, September twenty-four conversation. But it might be a conversation we start now for September twenty-five, right? In fact, I think it's a really important one that, that, that we sort of o-operate around very short periods.
I think this year though, and every year going forward, we owe it to the kids that are there now to, to look at September twenty-four tweaks that can be made and make sure this year and every year going forward, those are not overlooked. And they're not always gonna be the same and sometimes you take a step back to take two steps forward. You know, sometimes everything's not an across-the-board policy. Some of our schools are small enough and nimble enough to address individual situations, make sure individual groups of kids or classes don't, don't fall through the cracks.
So I, I think it's very much true. And I think when sort of we look at this, where, where, um, in, i- i- if we look at de-leveling across ninth and tenth grade and we acknowledge that to, to a degree, uh, math is already leveled to a degree, word language is already leveled to a degree. And we seem to be having some real success in, in both biology and chemistry. Maybe our investment for the next year is around supporting, uh, folks in, uh, in English and social studies more, uh, whi- which is an area that, uh, that, and, and it's really interesting in different contexts. In some school contexts, English and social studies is the easiest place to make this shift. For us, it, it, it hasn't been somewhere we invest more, some more effort. And, and research are really three things, like people, time, and money, right? So, so we look at how we use people, time, and money, uh, differently and, and, and that's something we can do, right? And spoke and, and mouthed, but like, in fact, to co-teaching, that's, that's something we can do in the short term.
And I would also add like those, those shifts work I'm always thinking about and always talking about with people on the ground. And there's like a couple already that are going to be implemented for next year. There were some this year, but implemented and some successfully and some not successfully. And then because of where I am, knowing transition and leadership at the building is gonna happen. There are things that I have that are ideas potentially for moving forward. I've shared them internally, I'm happy to share them in one-on-one conversations. I am trying to be very, um, careful to make sure that the new leader of the building walks in with the space to have conversations with people, um, teachers and students on the ground to be thinking about their own moves that they'll make moving forward as well, right? So that's just something that is, it's, it's part of my thinking, um, as well.
And on the other side of that, along with Christie's thinking about that, we're trying to, to work with staff so they can articulate to the next leader some of what they value and need to be highly successful, right? So it's, somebody's gonna come into our community or maybe from our community and, 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 and take on this role and, and, and we'll lean on them for their professionalism, but we also have to meet them halfway saying, we've been deep in this work for, for three years plus a bunch of years planning it and, and here's our best thinking of this.
Anyone else?
Um, I, I have so many, but I'm not gonna take anybody's time. I'm just gonna leave us all with a question. And Oliver's presentation, um, brought it to me. I'm reading Oliver's letter that he wrote to us as a school board and I won't get into that because I told him I wouldn't, um, I didn't tell him that I have his letter here, which I think was very good because it points out many problems that we're facing. But as I listen to Harwood, I guess, Harvard High School. Are we, as a school committee and as a district, willing to take the responsibility of not passing and not graduating students who fail to reach basic proficiencies? And I'm gonna tell you, that is a challenge because you're gonna hear if we're gonna raise rigor and we're gonna have to have kids that are on that scale that say they did not meet basic requirements. And I don't want to have a phone call from a parent that says, well, he did this and this. And this is the challenge, among other challenges, this is one of the big ones in my mind. We have to take the responsibility of not passing and not seeing kids cross the stage in four years. Maybe six, I don't know, but we have to face that if what we're doing here means anything. We have to say, we stand for something. And if you can't do this, we're sorry. We gave you four years, we've given you all this help, but you can't do it or you don't want to do it. And I hear what is, what, what Anna said, um, I, I, I'm not gonna ask the question because it's too long. Okay, so think about that as we're talking about this. Are we as a district willing to go on record and say, we're not gonna graduate some people, okay? That is what we're talking about here. We're talking about proficiencies and I'm all for it. I'm all for proficiencies. I taught in a department that twenty years ago did this. But we also didn't graduate kids. Kids had social studies credits to make up after they did not graduate. And I can tell you, dealing with parents whose son or daughter is not graduating. Okay, so I'll leave that. Okay, so I'll leave that. Thank you.
I don't like that.
To the, to the end of your tour. Oh, yeah, yeah. So it's just two quick things. So Donna, at the beginning, really told us about the the MSBA stuff, that thing. The Stockbridge Town Meeting, I need to have that in mind, at the beginning of the meeting, that's on uh, May twentieth, a Monday at six thirty. And then the quick update just on the DEIB thing. We said we'd check in on that, um, and our last week or maybe two meetings ago, um, we talked about the six offerings on the May fifteenth half day and we're looking forward to that and we think that should be, uh, really meaningful. Uh, and then Steve, just a little bit of retirement, some other session.
Yeah, so some committees will go through virtually policy as a meeting June twenty-fifth, a Tuesday, five o'clock, and will be very structured, right, correct? The Jason buildings and that.
I'm not, man.
Superintendent's evaluation, anybody stand?
No.
Okay. Final subcommittee, negotiations, uh, nothing to report, not right now. Personal.
Uh, yes, just a couple of things and I always like to recognize this. Uh, I think we we spoke about Miles at the last meeting in passing, but he's on the street, so uh, I would like to recognize him for his his fine work over eight years here. Uh, we spoke about Christie, obviously, uh, in all sorts of contexts and and I'd like to recognize her for her three decades plus service to the district, which is, which is remarkable. Uh, two other people announced their retirements, uh, Betsy Heath, a long-term power professional, has been retired in October, okay? I'm sorry, November around Thanksgiving, uh, so we've got time to to check in with her, but but appreciate her her service over the years. And and Dan Farley-Rubier, um, is is retiring, uh, at the end of the school year, June fourteenth. Uh, and he's another longstanding, uh, Spanish teacher in the district who's particularly known for, uh, I mean, a whole host of things, but for leading, uh, study, uh, trips, uh, all of them, and Central South America. And I think Spain a couple of those too. So I'd like to recognize those people. And then the last one, um, I I sent this out by email, but but on the list of current differences, um, um, we filled, um, obviously, the CBT assistant principal of the high school, Ian Brown, and Christie mentioned at the beginning. And then the search committee and I selected Cynthia Carey as the next money broke principal and she's the current assistant principal and she'll, uh, be in the new role effective, uh, July, uh, July first. Thank you.
Sure, and business operations.
Many years ago, and Steve, you'll have to tell me how many years ago, the auditor recommended that um, any amount of money above twenty-five thousand dollars for the horticulture program, be moved from the student activity account to the FFA account. Since that money is no longer in the student activity account and it is more like a revolving chapter seventy-four fund, uh, we would like to have the school committee vote to now keep the money in the chapter seventy-four fund to be used for the horticulture program on an ongoing basis. And we can come back and report how much is in there and what it's being used for, but this way they're not waiting until the spring sale to be able to pay for the spring sale and and they're buying stuff for the program itself. So I was hoping that the school committee would, uh, take a vote on that.
I'm make a motion that we maintain all fundraised by the horticultural program uh, in a designated chapter seventy-four fund as determined by the business administrator.
Second discussion. Harry Ng, roll call, Ann.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Sarah.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
And yes, you can handle us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, any older new business before the committee? Any public comment?
Yeah, so.
We got a crowd here.
As hands are coming up, I'll, I'll call on you. So Daniel, and and just, uh, yeah, name, name and and address.
Uh, hi, Dan Nielsen here. Is my audio okay?
You're good. Yeah, yeah. He he's coming over as a, as a host. Okay, Dave.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Fine.
Hi, Dan Nielsen, I'm resident of Sandersfield Road in Monterey, district parent of a seventh grader at DuBois and a ninth grader at Monument. Uh, just want to thank the committee for recognizing me um, and really appreciate the, all the updates this evening, especially about the leveling up process, which I can really appreciate is complex and, um, and really coming to understand the difficulty it puts teachers in. Um, and so, so really appreciate the community update on that. Um, I had a couple of requests to communicate to the committee. Um, the first is regarding the district, the report commissioned by the district for the December police incident at DuBois. Um, you know, we had a couple of community conversations, um, in December and January at the middle school, including one that included, uh, this committee. And community had a lot of questions at that time. A lot of those questions kind of got referred into this investigative report. Um, and now that report exists, but it really seems like it hasn't had a full, um, public, um, hearing. And so a lot of the questions that are out there, uh, are kind of still out there and the the report exists, but we as a community haven't come back together to to look at what's in there and talk about what questions might still be out there. So.
Can I answer that one?
Uh huh.
On the advice of counsel, because of potential litigation, that has to wait.
Okay.
But I hope it will happen, but it can't happen right now.
The other thing I wanted to, uh, put as a suggestion to the committee, uh, is that um, a lot of conversations, uh, over the last few months have been happening between community members and the schools concerning, uh, various aspects of inclusion in the schools, BIPOC affinity groups and and, uh, L T B T Q affinity groups, uh, in particular, uh, in the middle school, but not only in the middle school. A lot of those conversations have been happening with the school's principals and, uh, a lot of time and energy and commitment has been invested certainly by the community members, but certainly also by the principals and that whatever progress has been made has has really been with those relationships. So I think there's a lot of concern that that investment will be at risk with the turnover, uh, in all three principals. And so, uh, I think the community would really like to hear how these ongoing DEIB efforts, affinity groups in particular, inclusion efforts in all three schools are going to be sustained with, uh, with this sort of sweeping change in leadership that we're looking at over the next few months. Finally, I think that, uh, at the very beginning of this meeting, we we heard about exit interviews and I think those, uh, exit interviews seem like maybe a really valuable source of information uh, that could feed into the search committees and could feed into the committee's work in the future and the school's ongoing operations. Um, so I want to urge the school committees to really, uh, to really think about how those exit interviews are conducted, who's in the room and let's make sure we get all the information we need about what's going on in these schools and how to continue the good work and how to take this opportunity to learn anything that we might need to know, um, to make things work better in coming years. Thanks again for recognizing me.
Thank you. Uh, sorry, um, um, Dan, thanks for bringing those up. Those are things we have an ongoing conversations about and 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 we'll, we'll circle back on it. Um, I'm, I'm. Yeah. Um, the the next one I I'd like to go to is, uh, is Hannah Roller, a student at Monument. So Hannah, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna promote you so you can ask your question.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
We can.
Yep.
Um, my name is Hannah Roller. I live at seven hundred West Road, Richmond, Massachusetts. So I am a current junior at Monument Mount Regional High School. Um, and I really, really appreciate that this conversation about proficiencies has taken place. Um, I will try to keep my statement short, talking about my family, but that being said, I do think that this is an extremely important conversation that needs to be had. Um, I just wanted to add my experience with proficiencies and de-leveling in an English classroom. Reading. Can you hear me now?
We can. You're good.
So in my last year, um, in my sophomore year, English class, which was completely de-leveled, we had students at a collegiate reading level and students at a fourth grade reading level. What does that look like? It means that last year I read three books for the entirety of that year. It means that Of Mice and Men, which if anybody has read recently, is a very, very small book, took us from the first week of school to winter break. This was not by any means the fault of the teacher. It's just that the spectrum of ability in that classroom was so huge and so diverse that it was impossible for her to adequately meet all our needs. I was bored out of my mind while other students in that class were unable to. I think it's important that what that ended up leading to was we were left in the classroom. Students were being given, I I had to teach groups. We were separated into groups and I, as one of the higher students in the classroom, would instruct other students on the work we were doing. That is not the fault by the teacher. That teacher is absolutely brilliant. They're wonderful. It is that they could not possibly make this stuff. I want to state that I really do believe in the potential of the system and I really do believe that equity across education is extraordinarily important. That being said, I do not believe that the implementation of the system as it is at Monument is achieving equity, nor is it helping stu-, nor is it leveling students up. I like, I came my freshman year and I presented to the school committee about this exact issue. I really genuinely hope that people are listening that this time and that people understand the gravity of this situation. Because this is not just cohorts and this is not just pilot groups. These are actual students. I have four years of high school. I have one left. My first two years of high school were without rigor. Um, my experience is definitely extreme and I'm not gonna say I think for all students, but I do hope that the committee recognizes that these are students who have to be prepared for the world. And I do not necessarily feel as if Monument, my first two years of high school, was able to do that. I really appreciate that you guys, um, have given space for this conversation. Like I said, I think it's very, very important. I think it should be an ongoing conversation and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Um, anybody else?
Yep, yeah, just stand up, say your name. Come towards the table so that I can wonder what you are.
Forgot my glasses. Maybe, uh, I think I can do it. Jessica Oakley, I am a parent of a junior um, and a sixth grade science teacher at DuBois. I'm actually here to talk about something else. I'm just gonna say, based on the conversations that I heard, I really appreciate all the information, um, that I heard. As a teacher, I will say that I think the district tried to do two things at once several years ago, de-leveling and proficiency-based learning. I don't think, I think it was way too much. Way too much. We should have focused on one. Not that they're not related, but it's very difficult to do both about, to do any one of those well. And so I'm just gonna sit down. Um, but I came here to talk actually about something else, which is that I think that there is a, a feeling at our school that is, um, that I want to acknowledge, that is, uh, there is some division happening. There is a lot of uncertainty and it's kind of casting a pall over the school. And I think, I appreciate like the efforts of you reaching out to some teachers. I think we need to do more of that between the school committee and, um, the the staff at schools. Because I think to your presentations is great and one thing, but to get in there and, you know, I don't want to give anybody more work in the meetings, but we have to find a way to do that better because um, I think there's a disconnect. And I think it would benefit us all to have more connection in that way. Um, the other thing I wanted to say, and I'm sorry that he left, um, was that, um, I just wanted to personally, um, acknowledge and thank Miles for, um, his leadership over the last years that I worked with him. Um, I think he is even keeled, he listens, uh, and, um, I'm sorry that we're losing him.
Thank you. No one else?
All right, the animals consent. Don't be shy, come on up.
Hi, can I sit?
Of course.
Um, I'm Jennifer Garen. I'm the librarian at DuBois Middle School. Nice to see you all again. Um, I've been making notes like all week, all day on behalf of lots of people at our school and myself. And then after Jake and Oliver presented, I was like, well, I'm gonna throw all these away. There's other things to say. So now I have a new set of notes, they're very short. Um, I really want to say thanks to the Monument, um, folks who presented, Christie, um, you know, Val, everybody. And Jake and I for further suggestions and the review of their trip because I really felt like their presentations, um, brought a level of focus and gravitas and importance to like what is ahead of us in the district. And I, I really particularly, um, I hope you don't feel like to be, I think, called out too much, Oliver, but like it, there's something that he said, which was that how important it is to take care in where we are headed because there are students at the front of our mission of where we're going. I just, I just appreciated that sentiment and that statement so much. So I am here because I really believe in that. Um, I also want to thank Christie for saying early on in her presentation, she was talking about something else, but I think it applies and in the shift to proficiencies and de-leveling, that, um, shifts in schools are affecting the efficacy of these projects, right? Like teachers shifting teaching assignments and shifts in schedule and shifts in all kinds of things are affecting people's ability to do this. And I feel like what we have before us in our district right now is an enormous shift in leadership. Every single school, so many administrators, like we are at the, it feels to me like we are in a very precarious position in terms of the shifts in leadership and I want us to take care um, in how those shifts happen because I feel like our capacity to be successful in everything that we're talking about at this meeting and all the good work that you all do, talking about everything you do, every time you is really gonna be determined in part by bringing in leadership that understands, that has clear vision, that can communicate, that's committed, um, and that feels really supported by district leadership and district administration. And right now, I guess to echo something that Jess said, I'm just piggybacking on everybody. Um, you know, I don't, I don't know that at DuBois, like we feel that really palpably, like we, um, we're just, we struggled, you know that. Like it's, it's been a hard year and I sat on the interview committee and the hiring committee for Miles at night. I can only speak for me, but I firmly believe that at the beginning of last year, Miles, we did not intend to leave after a year. And I feel, um, just sad for our community that we're losing a good leader. And I can't speak, I don't know that, I'm kind of new to the community. I don't know the elementary school, you know, folks that well. I don't know, um, the whole scope of what's going on in the district, but at least at our school, there's a lot of people, some people had to leave already. There were a lot of people who were interested in coming tonight, so I feel like I'm speaking on other people's behalf too, like, um, we just really hope that we can improve our communication, improve this feeling of support amongst ourselves and with you all and, um, that we can just take care in how we move forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
But the fact that, before we adjourn, I'll say this, but the fact that we contracted more staff to our meetings, maybe for the wrong reasons or maybe the right reasons because they really care. And and that's important. Some things went awry, whether by choice or by accident. We want to meet more staff and we want to stay here. So come to our meetings, even when we don't talk about de-leveling and when we don't talk about proficiency-based. and when we don't talk about proficiency-based learning. Some of our meetings are pretty boring, but still come to them because those are the places we want to see. It's not just us coming into the school, it's you coming to see us. Because for years, we had meetings, we were the only one in the room. And that's not successful here, but you're all here or online for a reason because you care. You wouldn't be here if you didn't. So, and we recognize that. So, but please, continue to come to our meetings and continue to speak.
Yeah, if I may say, we're here because we're really feeling the warmth of the roots. So, I just, I mean, for a month or so, that's why we're here.
Okay.
Can I just say one?
Yeah, of course.
I had a million questions about, but I didn't wanna delay the meeting any longer. So, we were supposed to have a meeting first specifically on de-leveling.
Yeah.
Like, or should have already happened. But I just wanna make sure that, you know, just the committee, we can have this, that as an agenda and talk for three, four, five hours, whatever we need to do on that subject.
Yes.
I really am looking forward to having it done at some point.
Yeah.
Sooner rather than later.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree a hundred percent.
I'm gonna stop at the fifth hour.